Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, September 26. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. I am going to do roll call of the Plan and Zoning Commission members and then turn the meeting over to our chair. So first up is Patrick Carrier, and we've been notified previously Patrick's not attending this evening. So then I've got Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matt Hut Wagner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Here.
Mike Walsh.
Here.
James Rackliff.
Here.
And Matthew Bando.
Here.
Yes. Ooh, we're good. We're good.
All right. Thank you, Shannon, as always. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting here at Town of Farmington. Today is Monday, September 26. Before we get into the role, actually, no, there's no legal notice. Thank you, Shannon. James, are you okay being a voting member this evening in place of Patrick?
That's fine.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So you will be the voting member this evening. Thank you. All right, Scott, there's no legal notice because the meeting that we have, the, excuse me, the public hearing meeting is a continuation from last time. So you are off the hook. We can go right into new business items. So the first one is an application from Sue Gable, Gibbo. Okay, regarding, it's a sign application for property located at 769 Farmington Avenue in Farmington.
Okay, Sue, I believe you're, yep, you're on the line. If you want to go ahead and just briefly explain to the commission what you're looking to do, and then we'll open it up to them for questions.
Sure. Um, I don't have any control over how you scroll those things, but, um, so, thank you. So the sign is a wooden sign with a plastic applique on it. It's already been outside in another setting for about eight years. There's no peeling of anything that's occurred. It's 42 inches wide, 1.5 inches deep, and seven and a quarter inches tall. It is, it has little chain things, and I'll be attaching it via a screw eye to the area right there. That, thank you so much. That area is about a little over 11 feet wide, so it'll be a little less than four feet right in the center. They're hanging from, not hanging long, there's not really, there's just S hooks on the, the sign itself. And this is in the little plaza here, Brick Walk Shops. And there's some other examples of signs that are in our plaza right now. So there has, there has been a sign here in the past, long ago, apparently way before my time. So other signs had been approved, but this is my sign.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? Mike?
No questions. Thank you.
Sure. Scott?
No questions.
Matt H?
No questions.
How about you, Liz?
No questions.
James?
No questions.
Mike Walsh?
No questions.
And Matthew?
No questions. Thank you.
Wow, that's an easy one. I also, I know there were some notes that you gave us, Shannon, but the, where we're going with the sign is that it meets our regulations?
Correct.
And this was approved by the historic district?
And, and ADRC issued a positive referral.
Okay, so I think this is probably ready for a motion in a second. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Liz Sanford, I move that we approve the sign application from Sue, is it Gibbo?
Yeah, thank you.
769 Farmington Avenue.
Matt Hut Wagner, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, we're good. All right, Ms. Gibbo, thank you for coming in front of us. You are all set, and you'll be hearing from the town staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you're all set. We thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Bye bye.
You got it. Bye bye. All right, next item is another sign application for property at 360 Colt Highway. And who do we have?
I believe Allison's on the phone.
I am. Allison Ebbinson with Loretano Sign Group. Good evening. We are replacing the educational play care signage. There's two 16 square foot wall signs. This is sign A, and there will also be a five square foot entrance sign to the left of that sign A.
So right here.
Yes. This is the second wall sign, same size, 16 square feet. And then there's a replacement panel on existing posts at the front entrance of the driveway.
So it's like, for like?
Yes.
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
And then I believe the last page shows the entrance with the hours.
Sorry, everyone, with the different size PDFs scrolling through on my screen that way initially. So it has me jumping all over the place. I apologize. So that wouldn't be ours. And then the, just the, where the signs are located.
Yep. Anything else, Allison?
No, not at this time. Nope. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any questions regarding this application? Mike?
Are these just one, one for one replacement signs of existing?
Yes, that, the little entrance plaque was not there previously, I don't believe.
All right. Thank you. No other questions.
Thank you. How about you, Scott?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, Matt?
I'm good. Thank you.
Liz?
I'm good. Thank you.
James?
Also good. Thanks.
Mike Walsh?
No questions.
And Matthew?
None for me. Thanks.
Wow, I have a feeling we may be getting, we're just getting on. All right. So Shannon, you looked at the numbers, the signs, the sizes are complying with our regulations?
Yes.
All right. All right, another one where we can probably just have a motion in a second, please?
Matt Hut Wagner, I make a motion to approve the sign application with the Loretano Sign Group at 360 Colt Highway.
Rackliff, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, unanimous, approved. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
You too, you too. All right. Shannon, I was just thinking, we're, we passed these, but in the future, should we say as presented or does, it's okay for the record?
It's, without, without, it helps, it's helpful for the record, but it's not.
Okay.
It's also implied that it's as presented. It's part of the, part of the meeting, so I guess.
What is it? Daylight? But thank you. So going forward. All right, sounds good. All right, so the next item, Farmington Complete Streets Policy. Shannon, are we gonna move this one?
Uh, yes, I'm thinking, uh, we're gonna, for, for this evening, uh, commission members, we'll move it down to planner's report for discussion, and then we'll have it back on the agenda for official endorsement, you know, within the next couple of meetings.
Okay, thank you. Everybody okay with that? All right, so at the end of the meeting, we'll have discussion on it. All right, and then we have a couple, actually three applications to accept. The first one is an application from Felicia Inez. It's an application for special permit at 130 Red Oak Hill Road. We need a motion in a second, please.
Liz Sanford, I move that we accept the application of Felicia Inez, 130 Red Oak Hill Road for a special permit for a home business daycare in the R30 zone and to schedule a public hearing. Recommended hearing date of October 24th, 2022.
Rackliff, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're good. Next is another application that we are looking to accept. It's for amendment to the zoning regulation to add South Road Opportunity Zone and change of zone from B1 R40 to SROZ and some site plan approval. It's for property at 80 South Road LLC, and it's an application from Sager Development LLC. We need a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I'll tackle this one. Liz Sanford here.
All right.
I'm, make a motion to accept the application for 80 South Road LLC and Sager Development LLC for 62 South Road lots. Eight, 80, excuse me, 8864 and 8880 South Road for an amendment to the zoning regulations to add South Road Opportunity Zone. Change of zone from B1 R40 to SROZ and site plan approval for multi-family residential community proposed pursuant to CGS 8-30G and schedule a public hearing recommended, recommended hearing date of October 24th, 2022.
Rackliff, second. Nice job, Liz.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, application accepted. And the last one for this evening is an application from George Saras for property at 230 Main Street in Unionville. We need a motion to accept it and a second, please.
This is Rackliff. I got it. I'll take this one, Liz. You wanna switch? I'll take, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application from George Saras, 230 Main Street for change of zone from R20 to R12 and special permit for two family use and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October 24th, 2022.
Liz Sanford, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are good with the new business portion of our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for moving this right along. All right, now we're moving to the public hearing portion. Again, it's a continuation from last time. This is an application from Calco Construction Incorporated. It's an application for special permit for an 11 lot cluster subdivision at 168 Coppermine Road, R30 zone. Again, this is a public hearing. We have some updates probably right from the applicant. Is that how we should run it first?
Uh, yes, please. So we'll hear from the applicant. So same procedure, I would recommend, hear from the applicant, commission questions, public comment, and then response would be my recommendation.
That works. That works. Thank you, Shannon, for laying it out for us. Okay, who do we have?
Uh, I believe Brian Panico and Bart Bovey on.
Uh, so for the record, Brian Panico and Bart Bovey's here as well. We are both from Harry Colonson, 876 South Main Street in Plansville. So we'll start by going through just some of the tweaks and kind of reevaluations of the storm drainage stuff that we had discussed, obviously, in great detail at the last meeting. So very briefly, this is, the property is zoned R30, 30, we're proposing a 30, an R30 cluster subdivision. It's 11 lots, and we have 8.41 acres of open space with, with this proposal. If anybody has questions about the actual plan that they need me to touch back on, I will, but I don't want to kind of reiterate the same thing from last week if everybody's familiar. So I'll just touch on some of the change, some of the changes that we did and some of that reevaluation that I was talking about. So we went through, and I want to first address a couple of key factors here, a couple of key items. So this, this site, the soils for this, we have tested, we have done soil testing out here in the areas of the detention basins, and they will infiltrate water. We've gone through, we've done percolation tests, we figured out what that value was, and then we assessed that and put that into our calculations. So from last week's, or two weeks ago, the previous meeting, everything that we talked about as far as the basins infiltrating water and how all that was gonna happen, and the decreases in volume and all of that, all of that still remains true if you look at and take into consideration infiltration in the design. So with that being said, both our office with, at the request of town staff, said, okay, in the event the basins stop infiltrating water, there, there's, in the event that there's no infiltration, because let's say we have a couple of hundred-year storms back to back, the ground is overly saturated, it just can't absorb as much water as it did before. So the basin is now dry and empty, and another storm comes, but the ground is so saturated that it's not gonna take in that same amount of water. What happens to the basins at that point? So what we did was we reran all of the models and redid the entire storm drainage report without considering the fact that the, that the ground is gonna infiltrate any water whatsoever. So the same way as we talked about last week, we have grass areas, we have woods areas, we have all these different areas that take, that soak up water, that slow water down, that the water comes into the basins at different speeds. And then we have this new area of impervious surface, the road, the sidewalk, the unit roofs, the house roofs. All of those have an effect on the site and how the basins operate. So we went back through, we took the accounting for infiltration out of the design completely. And in doing that, we reran all the numbers, and we now are showing and have gone back and forth with town, town staff to make sure everybody's comfortable with the fact that we do, all of the water from the hundred-year storm still remains in these basins. We still have about 0.9 feet and 0.75 feet from the water elevation to the top of the basins. So the water's not coming out of the spillways during the hundred-year storm. The water's still remaining within the basin. There is still some reboard and some head in there so that that water's not gonna overtop the sides of this basin and cause major problems in the event that everything stops infiltrating water. So that is the biggest change, and that's the biggest thing that we've done since the previous meeting, was basically look at this with just one more factor of safety or one more level of safety and say, absolute worst-case scenario, we get a hundred-year storm, no water's coming out anyway except in the detention basins through these weers that are in the basins, does it have a negative effect? And I think we're very comfortable in saying now, at this point, after looking at this yet another way, that it will not have a negative effect. That this site will keep all of that water onsite and slowly release it through the hundred-year storm event, even in the worst-case scenario kind of situation here. So when we looked at the old model, the question came up of, you know, we had a reduction in volume. How did we have a reduction in volume? How does that happen? So when we relooked at all these different numbers and looked at this all over again, the reduction in volume occurred for two, occurs for two reasons. Number one, the bottom of the weir elevation is six inches higher than the bottom of the detention basin. So you have a little bit of water that's just gonna automatically be stored in the bottom of that basin that's not gonna leave the site. It has to infiltrate. That's the only way it can get out of the basin. And so that reduces the volume coming offsite right there. And then when you talk about the volume of water leaving the site, we're talking about surface drainage. So the amount of surface water that's flowing and leaving the site. And obviously, if we account for infiltration, it brings down the amount of water and brings down the number of, from a volume perspective, of how much water is leaving the site superficially, because it's be, we're counting for some of it being absorbed into the ground. So now, at this point, with that being said, if we don't account for any infiltration whatsoever in the bottom of these basins, we do have a slight increase in the amount of volume. I believe it was about 30,000 or 20,000, 20 to 30,000 cubic feet of water additionally leaving. It's leaving at a slower rate. It's leaving at a, at a much more controlled rate through our, our orifices and our control structures and all these different mechanisms that we use to, to meter the flow of water leaving the site. But it is, in fact, a slight increase, which is typical in what you would typically see in pretty much any development going forward. So another consideration that I wanted to kind of bring up and talk about is that the way that this site is designed in its entirety is already, is, is well above and beyond what typically we see anyway. We did this initial design, which much, with much, much smaller detention basins, and we, you know, were able to get zero increase in runoff, which is the requirement anyway. So when you look at this site and compare it to other sites in other areas that are using detention basins to slow that flow of water to meet Ziro, it does much the same thing, except in this case, we have these much larger basins which are providing a lot of additional storage, especially considering the fact that these basins were made so much larger to account for and assume that we were gonna have additional potential flows from footing drains and all these different items that we now are very confident that we're not gonna have because we've put the footing drains above the high groundwater elevation. We've put the footing drains above modeling in the ground. So from a groundwater perspective, the water that's gonna be flowing, that should be flowing out of these footing drains is very, very, very minimal in comparison to what you would see if you had your footing drains, you know, down below that high seasonal, seasonal high groundwater mark. So that is overall the process that we've used. We've gone back and forth with town staff countless times, just in the, just last week. So we thank Shannon and Bruce for kind of going through this with us multiple times and making sure that everybody was comfortable and that we kind of looked at this every possible way we could to make sure that, once again, everybody was comfortable with the fact that as designed, this system will work properly, and as designed, we will have absolutely no impacts downstream. And I think what we touched upon last week, that's, you know, important to consider is, you know, we, we are aware, we are very, very, very much aware, both ourselves and staff, that there is an issue downstream. And we don't want to be contributing to that. And so that's why we spend so much time in different ways, looking at this to make sure that we don't contribute any additional water to that situation. Shannon, and then if it helps, I know that we put together kind of a little timeline, just so everybody, both commission, the public, can kind of see how many different variations of this and how many times we've, we've gone back through this and made this plan better and made it a little bit better and added safety factors and added additional safety factors and different changes. You know, so you could see that, you know, we started this process back in 2020, in May of 2020, and we didn't even submit the, or that was the preliminary submittal, but we didn't actually even submit to Wetlands until July of 2021. And that's because, you know, the site had already had, had, had been designed by another company already. There had been a lot of questions, there had been a lot of concerns. So we spent all of that time, you know, better part of a year, going through all of the potential problems and seeing what the best ways to alleviate any of these concern and eliminate any problems were. So then we submitted to Wetlands, and then that process, we, you know, started really going through. We did additional testing. We did, you know, went through with the, with staff comments and made even more changes, making the basins larger as we discussed until January when we got approval. And then even after that, we waited to submit to P and Z till July, because at that point, we were then, still were making revisions. We raised the road, we raised the houses, we moved all these things out of the groundwater so that, that groundwater and the issue of the superficial drainage going through these footing drains and contributing was less of a factor. So hope that this kind of helps everybody to see. And I know that town staff obviously is aware, and I'm sure town staff has made the commission aware just how much work they've done, but we, we think it's important that the, that the public and the neighbors and everybody see, you know, just how far that this has come. I know that they were there through the Wetlands application process, but this way, at least everybody's aware of just how many sets of plans this has been and how many changes we've tried to make to make this the best possible development that we can. As I mentioned, I, we do, I do have Bart Bovey, who is our senior engineer at Harry Colons on here as well. Him and I have both spent a lot of time on this project. So if there's any questions that anybody has for myself or for Bart, or Bart, if, if there was anything I missed that you might want to touch on or address, please feel free to do so.
Just a couple of things. And just let, Commissioner, I did re-watch the public hearing from last meeting, so I'm fully aware of all the questions and comments that were made by both the commissioners and the neighbors. And I reiterate with Brian, we're very sensitive to what the neighbors have done, but they relay problems that presently exist. So if we did nothing, they're still gonna have the same problems that they have, or you know, we're not gonna exacerbate the condition. I can't say, let me just get this out here. I, I can't say also that we are not adding any water offsite. It may sound weird, but a drop of water that lands on this site is gonna leave the site either overland or underland or, you know, subsurface. What we want to do is try to replicate what's happening at the present time, not adding to a groundwater condition, not adding to a surface water condition. So we're trying to replicate what's presently happening with our proposed plan. And while the original proposal that was originally submitted, you know, five, six years ago, probably had minimal work done to satisfy the town requirements, what we're doing and proposing far exceeds what the town standards are, and town staff has gone out of their way with us to find a better solution that exceeds their requirements. I will say one more thing. The distance, the existing brook flows between Coppermine, and I think it's Long Hill, the road up there. Yeah, we are willing to go through and hand-clear that brook to make sure there are no obstructions in there. I know during the Wetlands with Shannon and Bruce on, I walked, that there was a rather large tree kind of where that finger in the, of the adjacent property falls in, and it's kind of not so much obstructing flow, but it's potentially be a major trash rack. And as part of the, the, the work that we suggested as part of the original Wetlands permit was to remove that tree. First of all, that work should be done by hand, and I think we can go through individually, look at that entire brook, find out if there's any obstructions that are gonna flow. We will go as far as Westman Road. But bear in mind, that is a private property. We'd have to get approvals from those property owners to get that. And whether we go ahead and do it or the town wants to take initiative and do it because they don't feel that we're taking enough of a, of a push, but we would condition this approval on doing that work just to ensure that water is moving through our site. Again, we are trying to replicate original conditions, and we're not adding any water. The whole, the whole batch of the latest model conditions, as Brian explained, looked at solely what happens if those areas don't perk, the ponds don't perk, and we don't feel that's gonna happen. We feel those areas will perk. The, the double active gas scenario, as I call it, with 200-year storms in a row, that's not good for anybody. It's not good for this site. It's not good for the center of town. It's not, you know, good, but it, for the likelihood of that happening is extremely minimal. But what we've demonstrated is if there is no infiltration, those ponds will function and those ponds will not uh, fill up and overflow and go into the neighbors' properties. So I hope you understand that our original batch of calculations are the ones that we really think are going to function with the infiltration and the latest stuff that we, uh, did within the last couple of days are really a worst case non-infiltration scenario. And, uh, I've been out for a day, but, uh, I was involved a lot of the Zoom emails and I follow the, uh, the emails today. So, uh, if you've got questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ryan and Bart. Um, Shannon, I was thinking of the couple of, well, some of the questions that should we review the questions or did all the commissioners see their responses? Or is that discussion, during discussion maybe? I don't want to derail us too much, but.
Um, why don't? Because I, it was emailed out to everybody. So today, understanding a lot of folks' work, but why don't we go through and see what questions are there? And then if I need to all incorporate it verbally into a response if, if
Yep.
And, and commissioners too, you can direct, if there's questions for me or Bruce here is also on the phone. Um, or to, uh, to the applicant. So, um, okay. Please make sure whatever question you have and whoever it's for, uh, please feel free to ask it and we'll direct it accordingly.
All right. Thank you. And, um, between the applicant and you, Shannon and Bruce, wow, what, what an effort to, um, do all this research, the calculations and, um, it is an important piece of land and um, like it was stated already, um, the neighbors are concerned, right? It's not this specific project, but it's the neighbors. And, all right. So, um, let's turn this over to the commissioners. So thank you again, um, uh, for the information, Brian and Bart. Mike, let's start with you. Do you have any questions for applicant or town staff?
Uh, I don't have any questions, uh, but thank you to, uh, the applicant and town staff for the, uh, follow up work that you guys did, uh, in the past two weeks.
Thank you, Mike. How about you, Scott? Scott, please.
You'd think I'd figure out the mute thing by now. First though, I appreciate, I, I too appreciate the efforts Brian, you and, and your company and the town working together made, um, really, really, uh, shows a lot. I guess I'm still, for those of us like myself that are a little slow, I'm still trying to to figure out, you talked a little bit, Brian, about going above and beyond what is sort of typical. Can you like just, like try to summarize for me what the above and beyond parts are of what you're doing here? Again, just so I make sure I have it clear in my head.
Sure, absolutely. And Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these town regulation, uh, matters, but um, the requirement is to meet Ziro, um, which is zero increase and runoff on the site. And Shannon, actually, if you could pull up our, um, summary table there. Um, so basically wh- when we look at the peak flow during a storm event, um, the existing condition is what we model as the site as it stands. And then we look at, once we do all this development, what would happen to the site? And the flows fro- from the peak or the, the highest, you know, portion of that event, um, we measure the amount of water that's going to be leaving the site in cubic feet per second or CFS. And the requirement is for the existing flow, for the proposed flow rather, to either match or be less than the proposed flow or than the existing. So if you look at our summary table here, you know, at the design point A, um, which is this northwest corner of the site that, that has been the most, um, questioned, uh, that's where the brook is, that's where all the neighboring houses are that experience some of these issues, um. At that point, through all of the design storms, the two-year storm to the hundred-year storm, we are reducing the total flow. Now, typically speaking, if you wanted to go kind of from a minimalistic approach, you would design your basins so that your change in peak flow is zero. That still meets the town requirements, um, you're still meeting Ziro, zero increase. But you, there's also not a lot of room for a buffer there. Uh, also from a meeting zero and Shannon, uh, this is the part that I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know a lot of towns are different. Do you allow for, um, as long as you can pass the hundred-year storm through the emergency spillway?
Uh, I'm going to defer to Bruce on that one. I don't know if he's.
Thank you, Shannon. Uh, yes, you, well, you have to, you have to, uh, uh, retain the hundred-year storm. So I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about. You don't pass it, meaning that it goes over, the hundred-year storm goes over the spillway, but you're, but you're obligated to retain the hundred-year storm.
Retain the hundred-year storm. Is there a requirement for the amount of head? Um, in, in the basin from like the distance from that emergency spillway elevation and all that?
No, we don't have a requirement. I mean, we shoot for a, a twelve inches if possible. That's usually what we're trying to get for.
Okay, so that's generally the impression I was under as well. So you know, basically, if we were looking at designing these basins from a minimalistic point of view, uh, change of flow is just zero, meaning we're not storing any extra, we don't have any extra uh, buffer in there, any safety factors, anything. Um, and then basically our hundred-year storm event elevation as modeled could be right at the bottom of the hundred year, of the, of the emergency spillway, as long as it's not flowing through it and that meets the requirements. The other thing is, is once again, we, we went out and demonstrated that you know, we, the site does in fact, uh, infiltrate water. We did percolation tests out there. So we could very easily take the percolation, the, the percrate numbers that we calculated. And we could apply those numbers directly to the model, um, which as I said, is what we did, had done on the previous, um, but even on, on the previous model, uh, we implemented a safety factor in the numbers that we had put in there as well. So you know, basins would be smaller. The hundred-year storm event would be at the very bottom of the spillway so that anything more than the hundred-year storm would be flowing out of the emergency spillway. Uh, we'd be calculating and using all that infiltration. Um, and all of it, uh, meaning about probably one and a half times what we were accounting for in our previous model. Um, and like I said, our, our previous basins, uh, they worked. Um, they met the requirements, but they were more minimalistic. Um, and actually the original approval only had one detention basin, which I know that it didn't get to this stage and that it got denied in wetlands, but my assumption would be, and Shannon or Bruce, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, my assumption is that they submitted a complete application and so they probably modeled it to work. So they had one detention basin on the entire site that was smaller than, or maybe the same size as one of the detention basins that we have on our site. However, it had, didn't have nearly the square footage in the bottom, so it would have had a lot less water quality. Uh, these detention basins provide six hundred percent of the required water, water quality. Um, you know, so that's a, a, by far above and beyond, and that's just because of the size of the bottoms of the basin. So from a minimalistic approach, I think it would be safe to say if we had designed this that way, we probably could have gotten this down to one small basin. Um, it would have been a little bit smaller than the basin on the kind of south of the pro- project. And at the hundred-year storm event, it would be, and it would have been maybe a little bit deeper, hundred-year storm event, it would have been right at the bottom of the emergency spillway elevation. And we also wouldn't be as concerned with any of the volume increase because that's not part of the requirements or part of the regulations that we have to meet a reduction in volume at all. So, uh, it also doesn't say anything in the regulations about uh, footing drains or the discharge from those. So we wouldn't have had, we wouldn't have looked and taken into consideration any of that as well. Um, and we wouldn't have necessarily had to raise the road, we wouldn't have had to do a lot of things on this design if we were looking at this as let's just meet the very bare minimum of the regulations. Um, we did all of that because that was, um, you know, the best way we could come up with to make sure everybody felt comfortable. Um, town staff, uh, but more importantly, um, the neighbors and the, the neighboring properties surrounding this project.
Thanks so much for going through that. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I'm well set and I was.
Thank you very much. Okay. Matt?
Yeah, thanks. So earlier you mentioned with the new calculations, there's no infiltration, but that increases the water by twenty thousand to thirty thousand gallons. So can, can you just speak more on that? Is, is there more water? And but, but it, does it just leave the site slower? Is that how to describe it? Or maybe you can explain to me how, about the more water?
So there's, as Bart had said earlier, there's, there's no more water. The amount of water that's falling out of the sky today is the same amount of water that's falling out of the sky tomorrow. So there's the same amount of water is going to leave the site. Now, when we measure how the water leaves the site is the difference. So when the water infiltrates into the ground, then we're not talking about that volume anymore. Because when the water's infiltrating into the ground, it's not leaving the sites over the surface and that surface flow is what we're counting for in the volume of the water leaving the site. So it's the same amount of water.
Is there more water leaving the site? If this gets built or if this like doesn't get built, right? Like if nothing happens versus if something happens, what's the difference in the water leaving the site?
So that would be, I would go back to as we had mentioned before, the previous report would be reducing the amount of water leaving the site because we're infiltrating more water.
Right, but now with the new calculation, it, I guess that's where I'm confused, right? We did new calculations and a new update. Is now more water leaving because of the new assumptions? And I gotta, I'm relying a lot on the math, so I'm trying to wrap my head around how much to believe the math here. So I'm just trying to, you know, the old report had less water leaving and now the new report has more water. So I, again, just trying to reconcile that for me.
Yeah, absolutely. So the old report, as we're going to, we'll, we'll call it, the old report represented in our professional opinion, the most accurate representation of what will happen onsite. This new report, it was done implementing an additional safety factor to say that there will be no infiltration, if no infiltration occurs whatsoever on the entire project with these basin, with these basins, what would happen? And that was simply done because of the concern that, you know, absolute worst case scenario. So that's what this new report was representing. And so this new report basically just represents the fact that if that were to happen, the basins will not fail. We'll still have functional basins, they'll still be letting the water out of the basin slowly. I think that in our discussions with sit, with town staff, what we've kind of attributed all of this to is that with the conditions of the, of the site, the wetlands being so close, you have this brook that turns into a brook either during uh, very large storm events or during the seasonal high groundwater time. Um, that's when the brook functions. And so the, the thought going into this is that if the water infiltrates into the ground, it eventually leaches out and feeds the wetland, which would feed the brook. So if we infiltrate the water into the ground, it's still eventually going to make it to the brook. It's going to take a lot longer than if it just runs over the surface, but it will eventually get there.
Got it. So, so, so is the water, there's more water leaving the basins in this sort of no infiltration calculation? Than the prior calculation?
Correct.
And then Shannon and Bruce, for the commission, you prefer us to recognize this sort of new report and calculation and not necessarily the old one or just, again, trying to think about which report to, to recognize here.
I don't, I don't think, so a- as this is Shannon rather for the town planner. So, um, again, as, uh, Mr. Panico indicated, this is a, it, it was a worst case scenario that town staff wanted checked. After the discussions, there was question about how is it possible that there's less volume? So there's two different things that we're talking about, the volume of water. Right? So I talked about, um, and some of the emails that went back and forth today.
I, yeah.
I use, I like the pool, right? We use the pool as an example, right?
I get that.
And so then the volume of water technically in this scenario, because there's eh, basically in the, in the original report, there were holes in the bottom of the pool. So every side, if you want to keep that same volume, you had to keep.
Understood.
Okay. So both are valid. This is to help answer that question of hey, we, we're not really comfortable with that decrease in the volume of water. So this answers that question. This took out that infiltration mechanism and said, okay, we're just going to use the weir or that plug in the pool. So you got that one discharge point and that's the flow rate then that shows up in this in this chart is the flow rate for the volume of water leaving those basins and it's over time. And so we, they're able to accommodate a, a lower flow rate because they're taking a longer period of time. The way those holes, the, the, the orifice is structured, right? If I've got to get a gallon of water through a one-inch hole versus a gallon of water through a two-inch hole, right? It's going to take a different amount of time and that flow rate, the volume of water per second is going to be, be different. And so that's what's happened here is that the, the weir that's in place is holding that water back and that's what sets then the elevation. That surface and the elevation, and we know how, from the modeling, how high up in that basin that water is going to achieve to know where that emergency spillway needs to be set. So the emergency spillway, everything we had them run, all the calculations again with no infiltration to make sure there was not an issue with the emergency spillway, that there wasn't an issue with the orifice, that it didn't blow out the flow rates and none of that happened. So that, that was what we wanted them to do. We asked after the last meeting. So the infiltration came out, nothing else changed and the design parameters were still valid. So the basin size, the emergency spillway, the orifice, all held with the removal of the infiltration.
Okay, I got it. That, that makes sense.
If I may, you, you can think of the latest iteration is you're calling the, 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 uh, the flows. It's really a test or a tweak of the model just taking out the infiltration, just to see what effect. And then look at the numbers, one of the things Shannon sent and she penciled in or maybe Bruce did. Uh, there's a minimal increase in the water elevation. Those ponds are so big. Uh, water elevation in basin, uh, one B is going up, you know, three inches. Eh, you know, and yet, and then a second basin about two inches. So there's a minimal increase and all we're trying to do is test the models, just tweaking the model a little bit, just to see what if. We still think that we're going to get infiltration there, but the sense we had from the meeting was that the commissioners wanted to see what would happen if there was no infiltration.
Matt, are you satisfied? Do you have more questions?
Just, just one more, like, wha- wha- what do you think the distance is from that pond there to, to the swimming pool or that lot there to the left? Does anyone have a sense of that?
Um, to here?
Yeah.
And you want to know the distance, I'm sorry, from, from here to here?
Yeah, just, just ballpark.
I got it. I can.
That's okay. But also we can, you can come back to it.
It's okay. Okay, I'll give you.
Walls aren't there.
Yeah, close right there.
Two hundred and four.
Uh, it's on, hang on, I think it's on lot forty-four, hang on.
Forty-four, I think. Forty-four.
Yeah, it's this one, one, two, third bottom. One, two, three. So from here, from the bottom corner, two hundred and fifty feet. So I think the basin, we've got the wetland limit on here. So here's the wetland and then it knows back end. Um, and that's the stone. So we got the stone wall too, as a reference. So the stone wall, so somewhere here roughly is the the basin. It's a hundred and seventy feet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But they, we we need to keep in mind that the water course is in between. Right? So the water course is the low point. So the water leaving the water leaving this detention basin flows over land, hits the water course and then flows north. There is no mechanism to force the water to run uphill. Bye. Okay, so this is leaves the basin, it flows, hits the water course, and then the water course runs in a south to north direction in this uh in this area. And it's a, if I recall correctly, it's not very wide here overall in the whole skid like which you look at it compared to the Farmington River. It's a couple of feet across. Um, but it's for more deep. I don't wanna say it's probably three or four feet deep. Um, and a couple of feet wide, um, going by recollection from a sidewalk from about a year ago.
I think you're right.
Better, a little more than a year ago.
Okay, great. Thank you. No additional questions.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Shannon. Yes. All right, Liz, questions?
Uh, this is just a bit of a curiosity question. Is there a lifespan for these detention ponds? Are, you know, forty, fifty, a hundred years? Um, do they need ongoing maintenance?
So and Bart, I don't know if you know exactly what the overall lifespan is, um, but from a maintenance perspective, perspective. Um, they're very minimal uh maintenance. These are grass bottom. Um, infiltration basins, we did discuss with the town as well um about adding in uh under drains within them. Uh, once again, another safety factor to allow and and provide that we know that we'll uh always have a low, slow level, low level infiltration. Um, in which case, uh by adding that, that would just simply be that that infiltration trench would have to be cleaned uh periodically, make sure that you're not dumping grass clippings or anything into it. But basically, these are mode um and they're not mode every every week. These are mode every six months to twice a year, maybe. Um, I don't know what the town of Farmington's schedule normally is. Bruce or Shannon can answer that uh portion. Um, but basically just, you know, any large uh plants that start to develop in it get removed so that it stays basically just a big bathtub uh like Shannon described. Um, the only other potential maintenance would be to make sure that like that spillway is clear. Uh, make sure that the inlets and the outlets of the ponds aren't getting clogged with anything. Um, this is designed with V notch uh weirs. Um, so those are just big V shaped cuts in the outlet control structure. So generally speaking, those are better than um like your round orifice because as the pond fills up, you know, you you can't get one piece of debris to block that one hole and then the whole pond fills up. Eventually, it would work its way up and over um the top of the outlet control structure and into the system. But um Bart, do you know what the overall?
Um, I don't think people have kind of put a timeline out. I know the the major killer of infiltration would be silt and sediments that enter the structure. Uh, and the way we've got sedimentation and road control plan, we're not using these as sediment basins. So we're not gonna introduce sediments that have to be cleaned. So I think what you get for a perk rate is what you're gonna have long term. Uh, there is maintenance issues on the road that won't introduce it. But typically, the the road wash off is more sandy than salty. So, you know, we have mechanisms to trap the material at the uh at the uh the outlets. And one of the benefits of having a long, long uh detention area is let's just say you had sediment in the positive right in the front end. You still have that entire length of gallery that's going to uh is gonna infiltrate. So I I think the the likelihood of these things needing any maintenance fifty, a hundred years replacement is very minimal. And with proper upkeep, I mean, they should last most of our lives at least and probably a few lives after that.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Thanks, Liz. All right, how about you, James?
Um, I don't have any questions. Uh, nice work with you guys um all the way around. Um, it looks like a lot of work went into this. Um, so we really appreciate all the work of the the town staff and and what you guys have done here um to uh to make it um acceptable. So thanks. Um, but yeah, no questions.
Okay, how about Mike Boss?
Uh, Brian, you talked about the emergency spillway and I I just didn't hear what you were talking about, the distance you would in fact be below that in the hundred year storm?
So currently, um, in our, with our original model um showing, like I said, what we believe to be the actual site conditions, uh we had about twelve inches.
Okay.
Um, to the our to the top. I'm not sure. Let me look at the report really quick and get you what the exact numbers were. Um, but either way, with the new report.
Oh, it it was about the old report, so I'm good with the old report answer.
So so the old report actually was about, I think it was a half, it was about a half a foot um from the hundred year storm event uh elevation to the emergency spillway elevation. And then, um, let's see. I think that the other one was a little bit less than that. If I'm not mistaken, it was about three to four inches or so.
Okay, um, and then you guys talked about you did go out to perk tests and that showed infiltration will in fact occur?
Uh, correct. So um the the perk rates we got um, and I can once again pull out that information, but um, I believe it was somewhere around uh five uh inches per hour and three or four inches per hour for the other um, other basin. So uh, once again, not, you know, incredibly fast perk rates, but we wouldn't expect to see that with something so close to the wetlands. Um, but some some decent perk rates that we know will get that will get that water out slowly over time. And so once again, uh, if just to kind of put that into perspective, the five inches per hour means that, so we'll use the three inches per hour actually instead. At three inches per hour, it means that that first six inches, so the six inches of water below our uh weir elevation, that portion of it, that pond would dry out in two hours, given that three inch per hour.
Okay, so understanding and accepting your perk tests, um. My question is about the old report, right? Because we're we're focusing on you guys did do a perk test and it's showing infiltration. So with regard to the old report, again, just kind of going back to what you already talked about, but I wanted to clarify that you do in fact show compliance with what the town was asking you to do and industry accepted standards with this design, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then my final question for you guys is, or specifically for you, Brian. In your professional opinion, um, do you think this development will make the issues that the current homeowners have and they're currently experiencing worse or no?
No, I do not believe that the that this design will make their situation worse. Um, and I'd like for Bart to answer that as well, but you know, as our engineer record as well.
Since I'm the one signing the plans, yes, I agree. We're not gonna anticipate any condition that happens offsite.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you, Mike. And Matthew.
Okay, uh, thank you all for your continued consideration to address uh staff and public comments and concerns. Um, just a few questions for you. Uh, I I guess this might be for Shannon. Uh, is it fair to say that this design has been modeled beyond town engineering standards and still meets all applicable standards?
Uh, so yes, the the design as it uh is presented exceeds the standard. So particularly when we took out the infiltration requirement and it's still, everything is sized to accommodate all the storms. Yes, it is designed, um exceeds Farmington regulatory requirements and meets. So then therefore uh meets all the uh state and state requirements as well.
Okay, thank you. The approval condition uh Mr. Beauvais was discussing was uh clearing the drainage wall and intermediate water course. Um, I was curious, would that process of cleaning up the the local water course improve the local water issues?
It, I'm not sure. Are you addressing that to me?
Brian or Bart, I believe Bart spoke about it originally.
So so during the wetlands um sidewalk, uh, and then actually after the wetland sidewalk. Um, there was a tree, a large tree that had fallen over that. Now, the 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 question is, is that is that water, is that stopping the water, making the water back up um into the site or making the water back up maybe into other areas? Um, and so the Wetland Commission actually gave uh the applicant permission and the applicant agreed to um by hand cut that tree with a, you know, chainsaws and then by hand uh move it out of the water course or out of the path of the water course so that that water could then flow uh through. You know, from a, from a, you know, hydrological standpoint, the thought process is that if that water is traveling through that water course and we can get that water to flow through the whole system and out and not back up, it may actually improve kind of the situation everywhere because then you wouldn't have water sitting and pooling or spreading. Um, and it may and it may lead to a reduced amount of that water then infiltrating into the ground, which could have some effect on uh the groundwater table and for those neighbors, uh while it would be, I'm I'm sure relatively minimal. Um, it's still an opportunity to try to make it the situation a little bit better um and potentially prevent any future um, future water issues or backing up issues uh in that area, which once again could result in uh future issues for the neighbors and and for, I guess, residents of even this development. Um, so turn that, oh, turn it over to to Bart um or Shannon or Bruce to weigh in on on what their opinion opinion is, but um, the thought process was at the wetland stage, if we remove a section of that tree, it'll allow the water to flow freely freely, get it through the site, through the other, the other development without backing up and without uh potentially creating or contributing to any of the additional problems that are happening.
Yeah, I I agree. Uh, cleaning up, I wouldn't say cleaning it up, but making sure there are no obstructions. It's kind of like preventive maintenance. Um, my guess is that anything that's fallen in there now, it's kind of found its way water around it and found its own natural course. But I think preventive maintenance of cleaning out that brook going up to the whispering uh road road, making sure that culvert is clean, that whole length and stretch uh is is gonna be good for the whole system because that's a hope gonna flush out that area, remove sediment. And uh, yeah, I just think it's a positive all the way around.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. Good questions. Shannon, I I guess question for you. Can you show us on the map what will be the proposal to clean out this waterway? Like how far into the neighborhood? All right, thank you.
So the this is the subject property, one sixty-eight Copper Mine Road. So the the water course um starts at uh Twin Ponds and hang on, I'm just gonna put our storm drainage on. Maybe, there we go. So Twin Ponds flows north under Copper Mine Road into the subject property into this water, water course and then wetland system. So you can see the dark, the darker line pretty much represents the center of the water course and then some of this darker shading um loosely aligns with the wetland delineation that shows on the plan. So the water course meanders north through the property. Meanders north here, it's still in the property and then um it's in this section from this northwest corner of the property to Whispering Rod that the the water course is somewhat on on the property to the east and a little bit here on the the properties to the to the west. Uh, and then the culvert crossing here uh over Whispering Rod.
So that whole section.
So it'd be here. So he's the clearly is gonna clear on on his property and then he has agreed to clear from this north property line to Whispering Rod providing the subject property owners will consent. He we can't force him to do that and then.
Also Shannon.
Don't consent.
Shannon, if I may, I think John is on and I'm not sure. Uh, I just wanna confirm with John because he had uh quite a bit of questions about whether or not he would even be able to do that and what the requirements would then be because it is all private property. Um, so I think, John, if you're on and you wanna kind of maybe discuss that a little bit, that would be beneficial because I I know it sounds like a really, you know, cut and dry, easy, great thing and and the neighbors potentially are having all these water problems, so they, you know, would invite it, but it also could potentially create some other legal issues. Um, if we agree to do this now and then it, you know, doesn't work out with the neighbors or there's some other questions or other things come up. Um, so if John is on and available, um, I'd like him to maybe touch on that or uh maybe John can work with staff on this.
Yeah, he's on. Go ahead, Mr. Sinise.
Yeah, John Sinise. Yeah, listen, I did talk to Brian about this earlier today. We're not comfortable with going on other people's property to clear waterways because then we take on liability. So I I'm okay with if there's a tree that's crossing the brook on our property or limbs that are clogging up the flow, we'll cut them and remove them from that flow within the property, but we're we're not comfortable with leaving our site and maybe taking on exposure. Um, this is, you know, we got insurance issues, we got liability issues. If something happens, then we could be blamed for causing it. So that's not something that sits well with me. Um. The land that we own, we have no problem walking that water course. If there's a tree that crosses it, we'll cut the limb, remove it so the flow water passes fine. We're not removing those trees from the wetlands. We're just gonna cut them and relieve the flow of water, uh, the interruption of the flow of water in the water course. Because it is wetland, we can't go in there with machines, so it would have to be done by hand. Um. Does that?
So.
Clarify.
I'm sorry, I I don't mean to interrupt you, so but you will um do your entire property, right? Not just this one tree?
Our property. So we'll walk that. Yeah, where that stream is, if there's a tree that fell across it, we'll cut it where it fell across the brook. Cut it up in pieces and remove the trunk from the flow so the water passes freely. So all the, all the interrupted flow areas will remove the debris.
Thank you. Shannon, have you and Bruce or Bruce walked the the with that portion from the end to Whispering Rod?
So we walked, um, this was a year, so when it was in permitting with inland wetlands. So the permitting with inland wetlands finished in January, if I go back to our. January, if I go back to our. Our timeline here.
And the condition included. The waterway.
Right, January twenty twenty-two, so it was November. November, December of twenty twenty, so almost a year ago.
Yeah.
It was cold, I remember, it was so, um. That we, we walked the entire length and we walked from. Uh, somewhere in the, the vicinity here, we, we entered though the, um, the property from over at the bend on Silver Smith and Red Coat. And then walked north and followed the water course all the way up through. Through the neighborhood where it crosses Red Coat, um, and then I think we, we finished our walk there, so we walked this, that stretch. So there's definitely areas within, uh, in, in this area. That had, uh, down trees, branches that were evident that needed clearing out.
Yeah.
Um, in other areas. And it's common, not only in this neighborhood, but in all neighborhoods throughout Farmington. Um, you know. Residents mistakenly, uh, at times use the. Water course and the drainage, the, the back portion of their property for, uh, yard. Waste removal, um, and so there was evidence of some of, some of that and so. That can get cleaned out as well.
By town?
Well, it, no, we'd have to issue letters to all, I mean, the residents would be responsible for clearing out their own debris that they. Placed, yeah, too.
I understand that drainage is important. We're looking at the neighborhood, right, or the neighboring, uh, residents. I don't wanna go into what, you know, the wetlands, I wanna stay in our lane. The clearing of this waterway, is that a condition already of approval from?
It's already clear with wetlands. So doing, doing the work that's been agreed to on the property with removing the debris from the water course has already been.
Okay.
Approved as part of the wetland review.
Got it. And then we're talking about possibly north and.
Again, most of that would be, would be maintenance on the, and be the private property owners.
Okay.
And with the rains, we've had this, this summer, we're not, i- i- it, none of the. Blockages are severe that we're seeing issues at the culverts of.
I was gonna ask you about that, yeah.
There's no, um, culvert issues at, and I've checked with highway.
Okay.
Uh, no culvert issues at Red, uh, Red Coat or Whispering Rod.
Okay. And not to just bring up what Liz already mentioned, but. So we have a maintenance plan for the detention basins already or?
Uh, y- yes, uh, it's not an overly stringent.
Yeah.
Maintenance regimen that the town embarks on, but yes, there is maintenance of these. Um. And sometimes it's an, as needed, but there is maintenance of, of these basins. Um, we're required as part, as an MS four community to.
Yeah.
Maintain the entire storm sewer system and the detention basins are a portion of that. To a certain extent, they naturalize and that's no different on our, whether it's a, a public. Uh, as part of a public drainage system or a private drainage system. They naturalize, they then become a reg- regulated wetland. And then we need wetlands permits to go back and maintain our drainage basins because they take on, uh, wetland. Characteristics, so it's very, very typical.
So we're covered already, okay? All right, uh, commissioners, any last minute questions before we turn this to the public? Okay, we're good. So Shannon, is there anyone online?
Uh, let's see. Uh, good point. So I'll just, uh. Remind everyone that, yeah, for public comments, if you have a question or comment to share with the commission. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You will be, uh, called upon, asked to unmute your microphone and provide your. Uh. Name and address and address your comments to the commission and we have a, uh, Jose Ruiz. Um, if you wanna go ahead and unmute your microphone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, good evening. This is Jose Ruiz. I'm at twenty Whispering Rod Road. Um. So I, I want to thank, uh, the, the town staff, uh, for all the work that you have done and also I appreciate the work that, uh, the engineering firm has been doing. Um, so that, that is not in question. Um, uh, as I have expressed in many other meetings, you know, the concerns that I have. Is with, uh, all the calculations that I've been doing and again, I'm not questioning the effort, uh, which has been great by, you know, uh. The engineering firm and the town staff, um, but man-made. It's difficult to, you know, replace and mimic a hundred percent what nature does. Um, you know, in, in the comments that, uh, the engineering firm made in the new calculations. Um, I think there was, I mentioned that, um. Um, you know, some of the factors in the model included some of the vegetation that, uh, it's in, uh, in the property that, that couldn't help. Uh, and that was included, I, I would assume in, in the model, but we are introducing. People to this area. We're replacing nature and we're replacing eleven homeowners into this area. Uh, some of these lots, uh, in the current plan has some woods, you know, some trees that are being left. Um, but now then we would introduce people and. You know, the, the, the temptation there as the homeowner would be, well, I want to expand. You know, the, the open land that I have and take out, you know, vegetation. So I don't know if that, you know, has been included in the calculations. But that's one of the many examples of other changes that now by introducing people into this land. Uh, you know, w- we're introducing a change into, you know, the whole system. Uh, and again, I appreciate the efforts, you know, from the engineering firm, uh, to. Try to, to not exacerbate, but again, we are still replacing. Uh, the current nature, you know, ecosystem by something that it's man-made. And ultimately. The neighbors that are surrounding, if something goes wrong. We're the ones that are stuck with the consequences of, of that. Um, again, good intentions and I don't question what the engineering firm has done. Uh, and I appreciate all the, you know, a lot of effort. Um, but, you know, the risk, uh, it's still being. You know, born, uh, it, we're gonna be bearing that the current neighbors are gonna be bearing, you know, if something goes wrong. Uh, we're stuck with this, uh, and that's a big concern. One question that I have in the proposal for, again, going back to, to the areas of open spaces that have been. Left, uh, or would be left. I noticed that some of the, in area A, there's some proposed, um, you know. Stone, you know, walls to, to protect that, but the area that it's right behind my property, B. Uh, which it's right next to one of the houses. Um. You know, if, if a neighbor were in the future to start cutting down trees, you know, what's there to prevent them? And I want to hear a different answer than the previous engineer firm gave, which was a flippant, oh. It's the neighbor's, you know, responsibility to be vigilant on that, uh, which is a response that I did not care for. I know that it was a different, uh, you know, company, but, um, you know, putting the burden on the existing neighbors. I don't think that that's right and I'm not saying that that's a response. Um, you know, I just want to, to understand what would be in place to prevent. You know, the future owners, uh, of, of those properties to, you know, start taking things down. Uh, that would, um, not, no doubt exacerbate, you know, the situation and might not be. Uh, taken consideration in the calculations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Uh, Shannon, let's fly through the questions first and then we'll have applicant reply.
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So if anyone else has called in that wishes to make comments, please raise your hand. Uh, yes, Jackie O'Keefe. Name and, uh, address, please.
Good evening. I'm Jackie O'Keefe. I live at forty-four Red Coat Lane. Like to thank Mr. Hut Agner for recognizing my property earlier tonight. I, um, I think where your mouse is pointing, you can see my, my pool, um, that top. Uh, corner there on the left. Um, we do have a very significant water issue in the neighborhood. Um, I did have one question. I was listening earlier and you were speaking about a downed tree in the neighborhood. I was wondering if someone can point out where that was specifically?
It wasn't.
Uh. No, it was, so I loosely recall from the site walk, again, it was approximately a year ago. It was in. Roughly in, in this vicinity.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Um, the tree I think that you're speaking of is a very large old oak tree. That fell right behind property forty-four or forty-eight Red Coat Lane, which is my neighbor. Um, just to, just to the bottom of my property there. Um, and my husband and I actually saw that fall, seven o'clock in the morning, about. Twelve to eighteen months ago. So that tree in particular has not caused, from our experience, any more. Um, issue, any more damming or any other, um, issue to the property. We've had a lot of flooding, um, prior to that. And, um, yes, there's a lot of downed brush from that tree. But a lot of it's fallen on solid ground and the water free is, um, flowing freely right underneath it, so. If that were some kind of consideration as to, um, an issue, um, it's really, it's really not. Creating such an issue. It, I think, from what we've seen over time, is just that the land is changing. And from what I understand, and we've only lived in our house for three, four years, um. When our homes were built on Red Coat Lane, Whispering Rod Rose, Silver Smith. This land was very dry. We didn't have water issues. And I appreciate all of the work that the, that the developer has done to make sure that this new community in Coppermine would be safe. From any kind of water issue, but. Are we looking to the future? It's not good enough right now to look to the past to say that. You know, we have, we have all of these, these measures, these statistics, these numbers to say that we won't have an issue in these existing homes. And as much as all of our neighbors really love this town of Farmington, would love to invite more families to it. Can we afford to have so many homes here? Is it fair to the existing neighbors? When all of our homes right around this development are already experiencing so many flooding issues? And it's so likely to become worse. And if everyone in this committee would be willing to actually come to my backyard and see. What it looks like, especially in spring during the rainy season. This is a very open, open welcome. It's one thing to look at this map, uh, two D. Um, but it's quite another thing to actually, you know, see our, our backyards and see what's happened, especially to know that ten, twenty, thirty years ago. All of our properties were dry. So, thank you very much for your time. Um, one last thing I'd like to, to ask the developer, um. Obviously, all of our, all of these neighbors. Um, in this area are very concerned about our properties since we've seen a lot of growing, um, issues with water. Would the developer be willing to guarantee in writing that we wouldn't have further issues? That, that the issues wouldn't be getting worse once these homes are, um, once these homes are built? And to the commission, if the developer's not willing to give us all something in writing. Saying that that wouldn't happen, then please, would you ask yourselves why they would not? And please also consider. The current homeowners, um, property owners here in Farmington who have lived here for many decades to please. Um, protect our rights, protect our homes. It's, it's really very concerning for many people, not just in the streets. That are outlining this development, but as you know, the water does travel northeast from here. And, um, there's a lot of properties that are likely to. Uh, experience some further issues down the line, maybe in the next five years, next ten, fifty years. Either way, it's, is it, is it really beneficial to the neighborhood to be adding eleven more homes to this property at one sixty-eight Coppermine? Um, maybe three, four, five, six homes would be, you know, a little bit more reasonable. I, I don't know, that's up to you, not, not us, but. Um, we, we just ask you to please con- consider us. Because we are experiencing, uh, quite, um, we're almost on the brink of a disaster in our own yards, quite honestly. And, uh, we're seeking your help. So, thank you so very much for hearing me tonight. We appreciate all of the work you're doing.
Thank you. That was the lady of the pool.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good. Uh, okay, if anyone else has called in. To speak and address the commission, please raise your hand in the Zoom feature. And you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Right, Madam Chair, at this time, there's no other, uh, hands raised. I do, sorry, there was one. Uh, written piece of correspondence that came in. It was an email that was shared. Uh, as a follow-up to the.
Oh, from Diane.
From the, uh, September twelfth hearing. It was a follow-up from, um, Ms. Diane Clerken. And response to a dialogue that took place at the meeting with, uh, Commissioner Carrier at that time. With respect to, uh, I believe homes, I believe the question, the genesis of this were, um, homes that had been built. In the area, uh, since she had moved into. The, uh, the neighborhood. And so that was the genesis of, of this list and the response that came through. So that is shared on the screen for the record.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so that is it. So I guess, uh, if the applicant can, uh. Respond to the comments from Mr. Ruiz, Ms. O'Keefe. That would be, uh, great.
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, as far as the comment about, you know, additional clearing and the potential impacts that that could have. Um. You know, I understand the frustration with being told that, you know, that's your responsibility. It, it's, it's not necessarily your responsibility. Um. It, it is a part of each one of these homeowners would know where their boundary is, what their property limits are. Um, most of these. Properties, at least all of the properties on the west side, uh, have. No trees, uh, on them, so they can't do any additional clearing. Um, properties on the east, uh, could potentially do have, there could be some additional clearing. Um, however, the, the, I think that the pieces that you're most concerned about, for example, lot six and seven. Uh, that tree clearing toward the wetlands, which would be towards your property there, so that is, uh, a, a good chunk of that, almost. All the trees behind six and most of the trees behind seven, um, those are all within the upland review area. Um, so this is what the, you know, approved limits of clearing was within that upland review area. By the wetlands commission, so that is the limits of clearing that have to be abided to. Any additional clearing. Within that upland review area would have to go back to the wetlands commission for, for their approval. Um, we did provide, uh, in the back there along those property lines. Um, conservation markers to show that that's the limit of open space, you know, so that property owners are aware that. That's no longer their property. They can't just go ahead and. Clear, cut, you know, all the way up to that line, beyond that line into their neighbor's yard. Um. Once again, I understand the frustration. Um. But i- it's very difficult. It would be impossible for me to say that ten years from now, somebody, you know, with an overzealous chainsaw decides to go and clear cut. You know, their neighbor's property. However, at that point, then, it's then the, you know, the responsibility of whoever did that. Unintentional or un. You know, or mistaken, we'll call it, cutting of all those trees. The wetland commission could very easily come back to them and say. You know, you need to replant that buffer, that's, that was there for a reason. Um. The. Uh, moving on, uh, to the kind of question concerned about the tree in, that fell and clearing that tree. The, uh, moving on, uh, to the kind of question concerned about the tree in, that fell and clearing that tree along the water course. Obviously, if it, if we don't feel like it's contributing to the current problem um, of the drainage, uh, that, that's okay. We still feel as though it, it, it provides the potential to create a blockage at some point. If that tree is down across the water course and over the next five years it fills up with leaves or, or debris or other branches, it could potentially create a larger problem five years, ten years down the line. And so that, I believe that that was the intent that the, that the town staff and that the Wetland Commission was kind of looking for, toward, was more toward the future. You know, let's do the maintenance now, now that, you know, we can, before it becomes essentially the town's responsibility as owning that open space. Let's get that done now so that ten years from now, it doesn't contribute further toward the problem. Uh, I'll, I don't, you know, have a, a great answer for you on whether, on the developer, uh, putting anything in writing, like a guarantee of some sort. I think that, you know, a- that, that all of the experts, uh, including town staff have all gone on the record tonight indicating that none of us believe that this is going to contribute or, or add to any issues. All the, the experts in, in town staff all feel as though we've done our due diligence. We've gone through this with a fine tooth comb. We've created the best possible uh, design, uh, that we could come up with. And, and we're very comfortable and confident in the fact that this is not going to contribute to, um, any issues that are existing. Um, the existing problems i- in water issues and drainage situations for everybody's individual backyard. That, those are existing conditions. Uh, I know at the last meeting, I know through the Wetlands meetings, we've been hearing, you know, these issues have been going on. Some people have said ten years, some people say twenty years. I think even one of the neighbors said fifty years that this never should have even been built. That, that, that whole development should have never been built. It was built on wetlands. So we, we understand that there are existing problems. And I think back to even Mr. Sinise's kind of initial uh, comment about the clearing on other properties. If I think that the fear for the developer becomes, you know, there's all of these existing problems already. If I go and do something to try to help, you know, make the situation better, what stops somebody from saying that that's what made it worse? We have gone through this. Once again, last kind of point to reiterate this. I feel very confidently that this development, as we've designed it, with all of the research we've done, with all of the design work, uh, with all the collaboration with town staff and with other experts, that this project will not contribute to the existing problem.
All right. Is there anyone else on the phone? Are we're good?
So I think at the moment, we're good. We can go back to commission members to see if anyone else has
Yeah.
anything to add?
Yeah. So commissioners, I, I hope you have enough information, but maybe you don't. This is your chance to ask the applicant and town staff. From my standpoint, I feel like we are at a point where we can close the public hearing. That does not mean we are ready to vote tonight. And either, uh, you know, positively or negatively, but we'll bring this up, yeah. Commissioners, do it now?
Or you?
You can, you can. So that's fine. So commissioners, any questions? We're good? We, all right. So before the closing, Shannon?
I, yes, I just, um, so I've got, uh,
Thank you.
Brian, uh, yeah, Mr. Panico, Mr. Sinise, in, in light of some of the, the questions that came up. Thoughts on, I know there's a conservation easement along the open space at the northeast corner. Thoughts on a conservation easement along the rear of lot six and seven, say on the setback line, which is pretty much where the clearing line is? So, curious before, I, I don't want to make a condition of approval that, or suggest a condition of approval that hadn't been discussed. And then uh, at the previous meeting, it was discussed about additional buffer plantings along the rear of lots one and, and lots two. And just thoughts on that and perhaps, uh, there as well. Perhaps a narrower conservation easement here, understanding the depth of lot one is somewhat limited. But, um, a modest conservation easement on, on those and, and buffer plantings to that existing home.
John, do you have any objection to that? I think you might be muted, John.
Okay. Okay. So Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. Isn't there, isn't there a natural tree line there now?
So, yes, so there, there are some, there are some existing trees, uh, through that area. I think basically what we're looking for is maybe, we can decrease any clearing over there that we're doing and maybe just supplement some plantings in there as well. Um, some evergreen type of plantings in through just that one section uh, behind lot one and maybe just around the corner a lot too.
That's definitely wooded. That whole section is wooded. You would add buffer plantings there.
Yeah.
That, that ranch, the ranch home next to me, that ranch house there? That's got a, in the, in the neighbor, the butter there that runs all along lot three, four, five and six? That's all woods.
Yeah. So behind, so behind three, four, five and six isn't the question. Um, the question is just basically behind lot one, that neighbor right there. And it may be a situation of we're, we're showing clearing limits further than, which would basically, which eliminate some of that buffer. So we can kind of, we can reduce the clearing limits in that one area uh, there to provide additional buffer. And then essentially along the back of lot six and seven, John, would, in the conservation easement run, runs along the property line. The question is, do you, are you comfortable if we move the conservation easement to limit the clearing to the setback line instead, which is pretty much where it's shown now?
Yes, the setback line's fine, but the conservation easement?
Right. Instead of conservation easement basically here, whatever. I can't remember what the setback is. It's twenty, twenty or twenty-five feet. I can't remember offhand.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that, that, I have no problem with that. You know, keep the, declaring limits twenty, uh, within the setback lines is fine.
Good. Right. But set a conservation easement here on the property. So six and seven, rather than the conservation easement being on the property line, the conservation easement will be inside the property. So like I said, I think it's a twenty-foot setback here at the rear.
I don't have, I mean, they can't clear it anyways. That's, that's
Well, it's in, it's in the wetland, but it would allow then the conservation markers would be set on this line. So, correct. It's in the upland review after. It, it's an extra precaution.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, and that setback is twenty-five feet. So that would increase that kind of protection there, twenty-five feet. Down on lot one, for everyone, that house, as shown is about thirty feet or so uh, off of that property line. So I guess if we were to, John, and once again, John, as long as you're comfortable, e- I think even if we were to add, you know, a ten-foot conservation easement at that location, it would just protect and ensure. And then, um, you know, I, cause I, I remember being out there. There's a lot of trees and stuff. I'm just not sure how, wait, how dense it is right through that section. Um, I think that that's in question.
I don't think there's any understory. They're deciduous. I've got deciduous trees and no understory.
The thing is, those lots, that lot one doesn't have, how big is that, where we are? Thirty feet?
Thirty feet, yeah.
We can leave, leave that tree border there. I mean, we wouldn't touch it, right? So I don't have a problem with that. As long as I don't have to take those trees down. If there's, there's no dead trees in there, we're leaving it. But we would, we would leave them in place. So what do you want? Make a ten-foot conservation easement between the lot one and the butter?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay.
Lot one, what's, what size, what's going to be their rear yard? What are they going to have there? Like?
About twenty feet. At the, at the closest point, it's about twenty feet.
So it'd be this, that the northeast corner, correct?
Can that house, Brian, that house can come forward a little bit, right?
Um, I'm, yeah, I'm sure through design, we can move that house forward. It's got a little bit of room. Yeah, I'm sure that, you know, through design process, we can adjust that as well.
Plus that, that footprint seems wide to me. Isn't that like forty feet, fifty feet wide? The box?
Tell you right now. That box is, uh, forty-eight feet wide.
Yeah, that's fine. We won't be that deep. Okay. Ten foot's fine.
Thank you, Shannon. Now one more or does it?
I'm gonna let it go.
You're good? Okay. That's good. All right, commissioners, are we satisfied? Can I close the public hearing? You have enough information? Hey, silence. All right. I'm going to take that as, oh, did I hear somebody?
No, I just said I do.
Oh, go ahead, James. Yeah.
No, I was saying, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Got it. Thank you. All right. Woo. One from James. All right. So at this point, the public hearing for the application from Calco Construction Incorporated on the eleven cluster subdivision of one sixty-eight Copper Mine Road is closed. So thank you, everyone. So we do need a, uh, before discussion, we need a motion, please. And a second. Yeah, I do. Do we talk about it after? Or, yeah, I think that's a good discussion. Or you want to bring it up now? I can do it now.
Yeah. Cause then, cause then you don't need the motion and discussion. Cause it would happen at the next meeting if you're not going to vote tonight.
All right.
So they need to decide if they want to vote.
Yep. So I'm going to throw this out to everyone and I definitely need input. So, you know, obviously, you know, this property has a lot of history. A lot of us on the commission, um, were not here, uh, during those discussions. There has been a lot of documentation, a lot of conversations, a lot of materials to get through plus, uh, comments from the public. My recommendation, so, you know, the public hearing portion is closed. Thank you. My recommendation is that we have Shannon draft a resolution. What I mean by that is a document that kind of puts everything together for us. It doesn't mean that we're voting yes. It doesn't mean that we're voting no. But it gives us a chance to take a breather for Shannon to collect the information for us so we can make the right decision. Is, are we all in favor of Shannon doing the resolution or do we feel like we are ready to vote tonight? I'm just going to go one by one and hopefully everyone heard me. And if you need clarification, let me know. Mike Rovola, how do you feel?
I, I'm comfortable voting, but I'm also comfortable having, uh, town staff draft up a, uh, a motion in the affirmative, uh, along with whatever, uh, considerations and, uh,
That's the affirmative. That's okay. All right. That's fine. Thank you, Mike. All right. I'm getting translation services here from Shannon. All right. Thank you, Mike. Uh, how about you, Scott?
Yeah, I, I think a resolution is a good idea at this point to just take a quick breather. It's a lot of information.
Okay. Matt?
Ju- just a que- so the resolution, is it approved, denied, or is it just a summary of everything we've discussed today?
So, uh,
Throughout this whole thing, yeah.
Sure. Uh, if I draft, we do it regularly for, uh, inland wetlands. So the resolution would be, uh, the, the top end of it is a run-through of all the legal requirements that we addressed as part of reviewing the application, including notifications and documents that have been reviewed. And then, um, it is left open then for the commission to determine how they wish to proceed with the application with the vote. I do put together a list of potential conditions. Really, it's the items of consideration from the agenda review anyhow, plus the items that were discussed here at the end with the conservation easement. Just so that they're itemized in case, uh, so we don't leave anything out should the commission choose to move in that direction, but it does not obligate the commission to do so.
Got it. I, I appreciate the explanation. That resolution sounds like a good idea to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. How about your list?
I agree. A resolution would be helpful, especially considering the, the new things that just developed.
Okay. And James?
I'm, uh, I'm fine either way. Um, you know, I'm, I'm kind of a, on the fence. Um, but, you know, I, I think if the, if my fellow commissioners want to go with the, the resolution, I think it's, it's a good idea just to have all of our ducks in a row anyways. So, um, I'm, I'm supportive of that.
Okay, great. Mike?
Um, I'm with Mike and James. If I was voting tonight, I would be prepared to vote tonight.
Okay. That's good. And Matthew?
I think a resolution would be helpful.
Okay, I proposed that. I agree also, um, for, um, record keeping, we have how many days to vote on this?
Sixty-five. It won't take six, it'll be ready for that. It'll be ready for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So how, uh, so, but, so you say majority, but we are doing the resolution?
That's fine.
Okay. So do we need any votes?
No. So there's nothing. It, the vote will then be held at the next meeting.
Okay.
So there's nothing else to do the same.
All right. So thank you to the applicant. We'll continue this at the next meeting. Thank you, commissioners. And thank you, Shannon, for putting this together for us.
Oh, yeah. No, and thank you to the public for calling in and sharing your comments.
You're right. That's a big one too. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Planner's report?
Oh, yes, we got a few. Uh, so first up is Claudia's.
All right. So that's the new location. They came a few months ago, right? Before like early summer or?
Uh, correct. So in March, March of twenty twenty-two. And I think, um, yeah, we do. We've got the, uh, owner of Claudia's is on Mike Serena.
Okay.
March of twenty twenty-two, the TPZ, you, uh, approved the special use permit for Claudia's gourmet coffee and deli to move across the street from its current location to ten twenty-four Farmington Avenue, where the, uh, the building was for the driving range. Most of the driving range operations have been automated, so it's left the building open for occupancy for other uses. The renovations are underway and I now have in my building permit system, a, um, permit for the exhaust vent and air intake vent for the cooking system for the kitchen, for the kitchen equipment. It hadn't been discussed at the time that the permit came through. At the time the permit came through, I believe the grill was back over in this vicinity on the floor plan. And due to the electrical panel, uh, location, the grill has moved, which then puts the exhaust fan now front and center of the front of the building. So, um, so according to Article four, section nineteen, uh, the rooftop and mechanical units require review with TPZ. And, uh, Mike, if you want to, uh, discuss perhaps the particulars of why the grill has to be here and it moved from its location that had been shown originally and what we're dealing with and, uh, why we can't do anything else with this equipment.
Okay, um, so the original plan, the grill, I believe, was going to be on the other side. Actually, I'm sorry. No, it wasn't going to be on the other side. The original idea was to have it actually, um, against the front windows. If you could see, is the, is the plan still up there? Yeah. So where it is now is actually going to be So where it is now is actually gonna be pivoted facing the street. We actually moved it. Um, I don't recall it actually ever being on the other side of the, on the right side of those windows. Um, just because I remember that, uh, very specifically, we wanted to put as much natural light in that kitchen as possible, and those had three large windows that would have been actually, uh, covered, so just wanted to put that out there. But, um, the biggest issue with moving it, even if we wanted to move it back there, we couldn't, because unfortunately, there is an electrical panel and all that wiring is coming from under the ground. Uh, my electrician told me that if I were to have moved that or attempted to move it, that would completely blow our budget uh, beyond belief, and it just, it wouldn't have been worth to do, so, um, also another reason, um, there's, it's the way that the roof is designed. It's a very low pitched roof with very minimal clearance compared to most roofs they probably in the area. Um, so unfortunately, even if the kitchen, even if the stove is moved all the way to the other side, it, there's just no way possible um, to to do it. It just has to be, the vent has to be in that particular space. And that's really the only thing. I've I've asked them before, um, even when we looked at it, I mean, we have to got a custom hood that's very shallow and, um, took, it actually took twice as long to get. It's actually on the way, it's almost here now, just because the roof and the ceiling is so low in comparison to what most places have. But, um, yeah, so that's pretty much why it's in that area. Ideally, yes, I would have liked to have moved it if I could, but I just, we just don't have a choice, and unfortunately, we've already, we're already about halfway done with all the construction, as far as like the rough plumbing and everything else going on for it to be in that specific area, so. Yeah.
So, Mike, we, I don't think we as the entire commission would have missed that, right? So some somewhere, there's a breakdown between what was presented in March to current. Why can't you move it to the rear of the building? I understand the side is a
We we can't, because it's just the way I I Shannon, um, I believe you and Spencer, my hood guy, talked about this. He was gonna make it today, but he couldn't unfortunately have his son's birthday, but it's, it's just the way the roof is designed. Unfortunately, there is only like so much clearance up there. The best way I could describe to you is the roof clearance is this thick, it's basically like putting an Oreo cookie up there. It's 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 very thin, it's very steep. And it's a, it's a low pitch roof. It's not like most roofs. It's a different, it's not your average building. So it's just unfortunate, we just can't move it back there. I've asked them, I tried, we looked at different ways, it's just, it's just not possible to do it. There's just no clearance back there whatsoever. Otherwise, they definitely
What prevents the grill, though, in the entire system? So I understand that they, they, there's not room to run the duct work to the back, but if the grill, if everything moved, can this piece of equipment move from here to the, move the grill from the front of the building to the side, backside, so there's quite a bit of room here on the other side. I understand the electrical panel here, and it's tight at this front corner. Can it move?
Yeah, do it. We already looked into it.
Or there.
We already looked. Well, the problem is, we we can't do it for a few reasons. One, it's Spencer's already explained to me, there's just not enough room to do a duck work there. Um, there's also most of the plumbing's already been done. We've already dug up all that plumbing, and we redid the plumbing throughout the whole space. And it's just, it's, it already cost me literally six thousand dollars out of my pocket to do that, so for me to do that again, it would literally cost me another six or seven, but, which I must add, all this project is actually being financed out of my own pocket. This is being loaned, this isn't financed or any of that, so.
So So there's absolutely, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's just no way we can do it. Trust me, I've I've tried to look at it, we've looked at it hundreds of times, there's just no way to do it. It's just the way the roof is designed. Can't do the duck work over there, can't do the oven, it's, try to make it work. This is literally the best option we've had, so.
And how did we miss it, Mike?
I I don't understand how you, I don't know.
It wasn't included in the, right, so do you have a vent now and?
So here's, this is
It's on the way, yeah.
No, no, do you have it in existing?
No, I don't have it existing, but it's on the way. It's been custom made. It's literally gonna be
At your existing location?
Yeah. I have it, yeah. I have it at my existing location, yes.
And then, okay, so it wasn't included in
No, it's the building permit, I think, and so when the building permit came through.
It doesn't have it. So what, show us the building again, Shannon. So what we would have is a giant stack sticking out?
So
It's not gonna be a giant stack. It's, it's gonna be, it's not, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be
This is at Hartford Baking Company. So these are samples, but this is at the rear of Hartford, Hartford Baking Company. It can be painted, painted black. This is at Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
And it's got the grill all the way around, but it matches the style of the building.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Farmington Pizza Kitchen towards the rear of the building, painted black.
Yep.
Pizza Kitchen, more Farmington Pizza Kitchen. And they're painted, that's at the rear of the building.
Yeah, and this would
This is So that stack is gonna be right there. And then there's gonna be a longer intake vent on the side of the building.
So the intake, the, as I was told, is
It's gonna run here.
Yeah, it's gonna be more towards like the side, towards the That's good. Um, yeah. So there is a tree line that will be blocking that from, you know, when you drive in there, so.
There is a tree line?
No, there's not, not from a, it's wide open on Route four.
Are you sure about that? I'm pretty sure, when I come up, I mean, you can't really notice it until the very, till you really see it. But, talk it
Wide open. Wide open here, the tree line's way back here.
Mm-hmm.
There's some trees here.
So so we have a missed item, kind of a big one, right? Missed item on the application. Now, so what are our options? Our options are doing
You can
I don't even the applicant says there's no option at all.
Well.
My option, well
Fighting finances, so you can move the grill to the rear of the building and have to redo the plumbing, or it, we've got it, the commission needs to decide what screening is appropriate, and the commission needs to decide if they, if screening, either painting it or screening it is appropriate. Is it appropriate handling it this way under planner's report? Do you want it under new business? Do you want it under, on your public hearing?
Right.
And that's your discretion.
Yeah.
I've taken it right now. I've got an act, you you've heard where the project stands. I've got a building permit in my inbox that I'm not processing at the moment.
Yeah.
So neither is the building official. And so the, uh, this now, Russ, the commission needs to decide how they wanna move ahead with this, so.
All right. No, it Thank you. I, all right, let's, let's go through this, Mike. You heard our Shannon, Mike Rebois. What, what is, um, your reaction? What would you like to see? This was a public hearing when it came to us, when we approved it?
Um, I mean, I don't think I don't think it needs to be a public hearing, um. I don't know, um. Obviously, there, there are other of these vents throughout, you know, in the area. Um, it's just what would, to me, what would be appropriate screening? I think, I think if you match the, if you match the roof and the vent in color, that might be okay. I certainly wouldn't suggest putting a big white fence like Dunkin' Donuts has, only attract more attention, um.
Okay, do you think it's any business item or something that?
Um, I mean, I think, I think we've handled these as, uh, as town planners report before, I remember Nardelli's, we handled.
Yeah, their screening, yeah.
Whatever anybody else wants to do.
Thanks, Mike. How about you, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Mike in that I don't think it needs to be a public hearing again. Um, it's obviously unfortunate. I just, I don't know what the solution is until I like, see what, what options could be, um. And whether that's new business or whether it's part of another planner's report, I don't feel that strongly about, but feel like I need to see what possible solutions look like.
Okay, Scott, how about you, Matt?
So same, I I agree with Scott. Thank you.
Liz?
Uh, I'm, I'm concurring with my, uh, fellow board members. I, I, it's not public hearing worthy or of that magnitude, but, um, I I need more, need more info and visuals would be great.
Okay, how about, uh, James?
Uh, yeah, I agree with my fellow commissioners. Um, I think the fact that it wasn't on the, um, on, wasn't on the original, um, application um, is unhelpful at this point, just because we don't have an, an idea or vision of what it's gonna look like or what the options are, so. Um, I'd support whether it be new business or a planner's report. I don't know if it necessarily matters, but, um, just we would love to get some additional information um, as to what it will look like, what the dimensions are, and you know, like a visual, um, where, of where it's going to be.
Okay. Mike Walsh?
I agree with what James said, and I wouldn't add anything more.
All right, and Matthew?
I agree with everyone. I think, uh, we just need more information, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, Mike, the applicant, you've heard it, Shannon, you heard it, like, is this possible to get us?
So you've, uh, you folks are looking for a rendering, so something more than the schematic drawings that were included, so you wanna so so we've got the photo, and then I've got, sorry, the sketch showing how it's gonna pop out of the roof. So you'd like kind of a, a photo rendering of how that's gonna look here? And then how it would look at the side of the, the building for the intake? And then, uh, it's what it would look like, you know, in scale on this side and in, in this perspective, is that what you're, you're looking for a photo rendering?
Yeah, I think, I think for, for me personally, this is kind of what my angle was, is that whatever would be required um, at the time of the original application is what we should have here right now.
That's fair.
So for now, go ahead.
No, I would say like, I guess fencing, is fencing required, or is that something we decide?
So the, the exact wording from rooftops, uh, Article four, section nineteen. Um, basically, the, the, the last sentence is, the commission may require may require that such facilities be fully screened from a roadway, parking area, or adjoining property. Um, so, the, the lead in is that technically, they're not supposed to be on the roof unless there's no other alternative. So if there's no other alternative, then it's the applicant's job to screen it, so it doesn't have to be a fence. It can be simply painted like these others, some are done better than, than others, um, from a painting standpoint. Um, these also, again, are all at the back. Uh, the only one I can think of offhand that's along the front edge is wooden tap, and wooden tap has a fence.
Yeah, it would look, I don't think the screen, well, we got it
But I don't think, but wooden tap used a black fence. I even, uh, I don't know that this building
With the step of a roof.
It lends itself to a, a fence.
Right, so, so a screen can be, doesn't need to be a fence, it can be painted essentially, right?
It could be painted blacks to blend in.
Yeah, you don't mind, uh, that was the plan originally, like, when we discussed it with our hood guys several months ago. Um, I told him, I said, look, uh, what do you think? He's like, I wouldn't recommend putting fencing up here, because it's gonna draw a lot of attention. It's, it's gonna, you know, you're gonna be drilling holes into a roof that was not meant to be drilled, and it could cause water damage and so on and so forth down the road. Uh, he recommended, he's like, a lot of larger places, uh, let's say, for example, Jersey Mike's, Quiznos, Alos Corporations, they always paint their equipment if it's visible from the road. And the idea was to, he says, we can paint that, there's actually a special, uh, it's a little expensive, but it's fine, it has to be done. There is a, a nice, uh, special paint that adheres to this, that won't fade. It's a flat color, it'll match the roof, and it'll blend in perfectly. You'll never notice it unless you're really actually looking for it. To be honest with you, even with Farmington Pizza Kitchen and, you know, what's his name, uh, Hartford Baking up the road and all that. I mean, those are older units. They have the one, the newer ones are actually a little more slow, a smaller profile, so will be even as noticeable as those. But, um, they, they've had a painting. I never noticed them. Until I started actually actively looking, as Shannon, you were asking me if you could try to find some, uh, images and examples of these painted. I started looking around, I was like, oh, okay, there it is, but it's because I was looking for it. Um, you know, most people aren't gonna see it, but if you start putting roofing around it, or fencing around, even if you color match it, it, it'll create some kind of odd shapes, in my honest opinion. And this was from my contractor and my hood guy also said the same thing, so. He, he just said the best way, if you really want it to blend in and not be noticeable, he highly recommended to just paint it. I mean, I could put fencing around it if you'd like, that's fine. I just wanna get it done, just get this place open, because we're severely behind schedule in here, but, um, you know, I, I think personally, the, um, painting it would be the best actual option to, to blend it in and hide it. Um,
Then you, you heard the commission, they wanna see a mockup or photo rendering of what this is gonna look like, so.
Just kidding.
They, yeah. So you can take a photo, or you can do some type of mockup on this that shows on the foot, like where it's gonna be located, what it's gonna be look like, how the height of it compares to the cupola, show it black, and the same at the side of the building.
Okay.
Thank you. And, you know, it, it sounds like you thought about this, the other, you know, people you're um, talking to. Like, we really appreciate that, but we do have these, you know, regulations. You did come in front of us. This was a public hearing. Um.
Right, I understand that, but when I did the public hearing initially, we didn't have a roof plan and all that stuff, and you guys never asked me for that, so I just wanted to point that out there for the record. You don't wanna ask me for a roof plan, nobody does, I mean, you know, I said this is, was the initial idea, was to get approval to use the space as a restaurant. This is the rough drawing. It will more likely be changed over time, which I did bring it back to you guys a few times to make sure when I did ask for the building permits and everything, so.
Well, and now the building permit's in, and we'd like the additional information, since that's when it's been provided, so. Now you can provide the additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so fifteen Farm Springs. Right.
Fifteen Farm Springs is the renovation of the Marriott, I believe.
Jeez, okay, that I
I believe most all of you were on the commission. I think Matt Fandel, maybe Hot Wagner, too, are, are new since then. Um, let me get, Fittiman Road, Farm Springs, and our lovely Marriott. So the
They got bought. I love the first developer.
So, um.
It's a hot potato, apparently.
They, uh, there's a, there's a few of them that are, that are going around, uh, at any rate. Um, in July twenty twenty one, TPZ granted, uh, CLP Farmington a zone change to a special innovation floating zone in the site plan approval to redevelop the existing hotel to a mixed-use multifamily residential commercial development. Subsequent to this, CLP Farmington sold the property to Fifteen Farm Springs LP uh, and Partners, and Fifteen Farm Springs is who we're currently working with through the building permit process and have been since uh, the winter time, um, and have met with them extensively, uh, through this year. Uh, the winter time, um, and have met with them extensively uh through this year. Uh, as part of the vision development, they would like to modify some of the exterior building finishes. And when we went through with this permit last summer. Uh, we insisted that they provide cut sheets and material spec sheets for some of the materials that were. Loosely called out on the elevations and so. Why have held them to that same standard with respect to material finishes for this. For the the revision that they're proposing, so. When this was sent to you, um, and I realized it was just over the weekend and there was a lot of information that came through. The first four sheets are the existing elevations, black and white elevations that came through the TPZ permitting. And the revision clouds illustrate the areas of material finishes where they plan to make some changes. And they, uh, and they, again, we got an A, B, C wing. D is where the um. Uh, like the ballroom was and the lobby for the hotel and kitchen, et cetera. A, B, and C. Uh, wing are all the hotel space uh proper. And they have exterior elevations, A, B, C, that face out. And then there are interior courtyard elevations for all of these, so that's why there's such a multitude of elevations that we need to look at for this. Um, really, there wasn't a lot on the D wing, most of it was A, B, and and C. So here's, now we're at page five of the PDF, these are proposed. Changes and they've highlighted, um, and they've put their their proposal in color, which is helpful. So existing brick to remain, what they're doing here is this. There was a a brick course here, a concrete course here that was just gonna be painted. They are now going to put a wood tile over a portion of it to add a a color interest. So rather than painting, this is being replaced with a wood tile. And the brick in the area that's shown here was going to remain uh as is anyway. And then the balconies were going to be replaced with a uh like a cable stay system. So it's gonna be a wire cable balcony that came came through. Instead, instead, they prefer to just leave the balconies as is, clean them, paint them, you know, so they will be refinished. Um, repaired, replaced if necessary, but re-refinish. Um, and then the the balconies, so some of the balconies are more of a um. Uh, more transparent and some of them are more solid, so they intend to leave those as is, clean and repaint uh in entirety. In the areas in white, uh, they had proposed. Um, I believe it was an artistic steel panel material. Uh, let's see if I can pull up the call out specifically. So that that cable was a metal post and cable system that was gonna come here and then yes, this siding was. Uh, horizontal metal panel siding in a dark gray color, so it was gonna be a dark gray with the brick. And now we're looking at um. An ephes and going with a lighter color in contrast, so a white. Um, a white ephes finish and um. They intend at the moment to apply it to the existing brick finish, um, which can be done. So there is for the most part a like for like there. Any of the areas that had had proposed work done, they're going to continue to have. Work on the building. Um, it's just gonna be a little little different. Um, they, I guess the cable stay railing is a is a takeaway. They're adding some other pieces of interest, um. These were artistic elements that had been added um at the on the original. These, I believe, have a lighting behind them and they're going to have a U, a U pattern on them with backlighting. Uh, the proposal, the development is planned, uh, the the name will be Up House. U P H O U S E. Um, so these are U's on the uh on the paneling with backlighting. And there had been some artistic panels that had been in uh introduced on the previous version as well. The D wing, they plan on introducing a chandelier.
Does the entrance now?
At the portico, correct, so this is the, so it's the former lobby of the of the Marriott that now is going to be the entrance lobby. It would bring you into both the the public space as well as the private access for the the residents and the private amenities. So there's a mix of public and private amenities. So you can see a little bit that says up house. I have let them know that the signage needs to be permitted separately, so they've been made aware of that. Um, so there's an existing skylight canopy. They're going to introduce a chandelier at that canopy. There's this wood tiling that they introduced on the residential portion is going to be brought through here. Some waterfall, they have different elements of interest that they're planning on doing. As part of the restaurant, uh, they had a glass door, an overhead glass door. To open up to the outdoor seating. They had asked me if there was any huge. Tie to the overhead glass door as opposed to, um, you know, articulating door or some other option for opening. I had indicated to them that that I don't believe that there's a particular tie to the glass door and did note that I I. Certainly a trendy thing right now, but as long as it provided the same general opening and the same general. Um, allowance for interior and exterior seating. And that flow and connectivity that it did not necessarily have to be an overhead door, so they're thinking of perhaps changing that.
That entrance looks, I mean, I don't know if it's the blue that's making it better. But the current entrance is so dark and low and just not friendly.
Yeah, they're not gonna, cause they're not gonna change the pitch of the roof, so the the roof itself isn't changing. But the intent, I think, is to to perhaps brighten it up a little bit and with the chandelier, perhaps make it have a a brighter appearance. Um, I think that highlights most, they've added some different light bars as you drive in. Um, so this, this is building a south elevation, so that's this. This wall of building A is going to have these panels on it, just again. To add some interest and different, you know, they're trying to have it have a uh. A little more upscale appeal to it, so there's gonna be a a black tile and then the. I believe that same wood tile, so the wood tile is uh taken kind of throughout the project and then an LED strip. Down through for some lighting. Again, it's a point of interest as opposed to, I think, being any real. Casting of light, um, you know, we'll work with them to make sure that it's not. So bright that it's a a nuisance, but it's more of an interest piece at this point. So so that's the architectural elevation changes that uh that they propose and it's really, it's not. It's not changes to the elevation as much as it just changes the materials, um, and we had been very insistent that any change had to be. For the most part, a like for like, like I said, the exception is the railing and I don't know that I've I've got a, for me personally, a hard sticking point on the railing. The other thing uh that they wanted to change was some of the landscaping, more particularly in the pool area. Again, this is the courtyard, so this is the twenty twenty one approved plan and it had the the full planting list. And um, and this is the twenty twenty one approved plan at the front entrance, so this is where the portico is, so that. The new chandelier is gonna be located here. Um, this is where the. Uh, doorway would be the overhead door is and then the outdoor seating area. Um, so they've changed the plants, the plants are gonna be smaller and a little lower in scale. Um, not as many trees, so the density of planting. There's smaller plants, but more of them. And what they pointed out is that there's the way this pool area is set up, you can see the double set of stairs. Uh, in a couple of locations, so there's a ground area, but then there's a second tier of seating. For lounge chairs, um, et cetera, kind of all the way around and with some of the larger scale of planting. It they've, the fear was there was a potential to obstruct the line of sight if you were sitting up in this upper area. It obstructs the line of sight to the lower pool area, you're just gonna be looking at.
That makes sense.
Tree canopy. So um, it is still, um, you know, a decent quantity of plants, they're lower ornamental. A lot of different types of ornamental grasses. Um, there is some boxwood, which I told them, I said, seems a little pedestrian. For an area of this nature, so they might change that out, hydrangeas. Um, lots of things, like a purple, lots of purples and greens is what they were looking for, so. Um, I'm hoping they change out the boxwood. This is the um area at the front entrance. The existing river birch trees are going to remain and they're just going with smaller understory plants around the river birch. Outdoor seating is still there. Bruce, his eye picked up on it before mine did. The seating area as shown is a smaller area. Again, I don't know that I've, as long as there, and and some of this is, it's gonna be dictated, they're they're looking for a third-party vendor to run. The restaurant within the facility, so it's really who comes in to run the restaurant will dictate. How this final element gets laid out, but it is. When you look at at this and you look at where, how far this pushes out compared to the portico and then we go back to plans. And there's the portico, right, and then you're coming through. It's it's clearly been diminished in size.
Right, but, yep.
Um, but, you know, from a planting area, you know, we can, I can make reference on that element of it to them. If we, if the commission feels strongly that it stays the same size, I can let them know that and then the plans, you know, just. Provide that feedback, so they can proceed, but that area needs to stay the same. So a lot of this, it's um. You know, these things have, when you have the project bought and sold, this is gonna happen and even as trends change. In material and some of it's just material availability, et cetera, so they. I've I've put it to the commission to take a, take a look at and if uh, if you're in agreement, then we'll handle this. Um, administratively, I'll let them know that they can can proceed as shown, if there's questions, concerns. The uh, the gentleman, unfortunately, because of the Rosh Hashanah holiday, the gentlemen were not able to join us this evening, otherwise they would have been on the call, so.
Thanks for picking up on the signs, right, that they have to come back for that. I just, uh, geez, I had such high hopes that we would have something open by now between all the different projects.
Yes.
I think, yeah, okay.
It's a, it's a work in progress, this one.
Damn, do you, well, I don't even, you think spring or who knows?
Uh, that's their intent, but it's um.
Or which spring is it, twenty twenty three spring? Sorry, okay.
It's being recorded.
All right, no problem. All right, sorry, but I'm still excited for this project and um, I'm glad that they're looking. At, you know, the facility, you know, it, they're putting a lot of thought, right, into it. Um, making it inviting, hopefully people will enjoy staying there. I would love to go to that restaurant, so like, everyone is happy. But uh, let's go through the commissioners to, for your input, if you're okay with the applicant. Working with town staff, you think it should be a little bit more formal. Mike Rabulis, what do you think?
Uh, I'm good with town town staff handling administrative approvals.
Anything stood out for you and what Shannon explained?
Uh, no, nothing, uh, nothing in particular.
Okay, thank you. How about you, Scott?
I did old Mike on this one.
Matt?
No, same, working with town staff uh makes sense for me. Thank you.
Sure, Liz?
Uh, I think working with town staff is a great idea. I do have one question. What's ephes? You use that term, Shannon, I'm not familiar.
It is, oh, it's an acronym too, and I don't remember what the acronym. Um, but it is um. A simulated material that they'll apply to the outside, kind of like a stucco finish, if you will. Um, it can, and it's evolved over time and gotten a little better. It it can be a little temperamental as you come into like the ground level and it can dent even. So um, let's see, if you're to look at like a CVS pharmacy, a traditional, not the one like we have where it's got the clipboard siding. But a traditional CVS pharmacy has ephes on the exterior and it can, it can dent, um. But again, I think the materials come a long way over time, but it's a, it's basically a stucco type finish to it.
Okay, so it's it's applied more in the, so as you said, like stucco paint, something like that as opposed to. A board, a sheet or something.
It can.
It's a, it's a foam board.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's exterior insulation finish system, so again, like Shannon said, the finish of it looks like stucco.
Thank you. I could not remember what you just said for. And then I asked them if they were gonna use panels and or sections or if they were gonna apply it on it. They said they were gonna apply it on the brick, that they were not gonna be using panels of it, but regardless, I don't know that it matter from a. From our perspective, I don't know that that matters a whole bunch.
Okay, thanks.
Good question, Liz.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate the save.
Yeah.
Hours wasted in construction trailer, Shannon.
I, I can't wait. You must have lots of questions, just kidding. All right, James, how about you?
Oh, fully on board with uh town staff handling this. Thanks.
All right, and Mike Walsh?
Definitely good with town staff handling.
All right, and Matthew?
Don't wanna ruin a trend, agree?
All right, okay, Shannon.
I feel like we'd be insulting Shannon at this point if we uh.
No, that's fine, but a again, you know, just like, it just, some of these things require. Um, a more formal, I, believe me, I don't take any offense, but uh, some of these um just require more formal.
How are we gonna do any better, Shannon? Come on.
I appreciate that, thank you. Uh, all right, so we're gonna move, so I will follow up then with uh the owners for fifteen farm spring. And uh, and get them set in the in their direction so that they can proceed. Um, we're moving along, then I had just two more quick things under planners' report. Um, the complete streets policy that was emailed out to everyone. I opted to drop it out of um acting on, I didn't wanna rush it on everybody, it didn't seem fair. So I had second thought on that and dropped it into planner's report. Um, the complete streets policy is, the intent is to provide. A design policy for Farmington that incorporates. Um, all modes of transportation when we're looking at roadway design, which. Doesn't traditionally fall under your purview, except when we're talking about subdivisions and we're looking at. The sidewalks and pedestrians and bicyclists and or in Unionville, um. You know, our A, you know, ADA or any part of town, quite honestly, our ADA community and and making sure that things are accessible for. All riders and all modalities, so the point, uh, the purpose is to review. And if um acceptable, endorse this policy as TPZ. And then it would go to town council for uh an official approval. Um, as noted in the policy, DOT already has a complete streets. Policy that was enacted in October of twenty fourteen, so as part of our projects. That we get any state or federal funding from, we're already obligated for our designs. So when we're doing roadway improvement designs, we're already obligated to follow the complete streets guidelines. Through that DOT policy that's in place anyway, so this really, it's not an added burden on us. It's not an added burden on us, um but it is a nice, it's an added reminder and. It is helpful to a certain extent with some funding, we can obviously then say we formally have a complete streets policy in place, so it does assist. Us from that standpoint, so. My my request would be is over the next um week or two, if you can take a look at it, obviously, if you have any questions, let me know. Either myself or Bruce here can answer the questions for you. Uh, this this came from uh the bicycle advisory committee that Bruce's staff liaison to. So the genesis is from that committee to us to look to to endorse it and then, like I said, to town. Council for final adoption, so that's what that's all about, so.
Thanks for the opportunity, does that, does that become part of like the you and and development or not really?
Perhaps by reference.
Okay.
Um, but it's it's basically a standalone document, um when we go to do the update on the P O C D, it would probably. Be tagged in there.
Yeah.
At at some point as uh as we're talking about the various sections of the P O C D.
Thank you.
Certainly. The email I sent today regarding subdivision and special permit processing. Interestingly, I fielded a few convert, a few phone calls from a number of you. Asking similar questions kind of in different ways about. Um, what kind of the latitude that the commission has as you're reviewing? A subdivision application and a special permit application. So I wanted uh I went back to. The land use class we had with Bob DiCrescenzo in March and called. The document he shared with us and went through the video, so that was the, that's the genesis of the email that went out to everybody this afternoon. I know everyone's hearing a lot of chatter. Uh, about a variety of applications that we're we're looking at and maybe looking at in the future. So hopefully that's helpful. Um, it's really important to me that all of you are comfortable with. The direction that's provided in that document, it should be really. Clear for you as to what type of discretion you have in how you. Need to be evaluating the applications. If at any point you're not clear on this, then then I'm not doing my job, I really, at the end of the day, you need to be, you should really be clear as to. What the expectation is and how much latitude you have, so hopefully this helps. Um, I also completely understand if there are still additional questions and it's just. Kind of murky, it it's it's not necessarily really straightforward, I understand that. And I'm happy to have Bob DiCrescenzo come back in and talk. And answer any question specifically with all of you, we could do like a thirty minute lead in to. One of our meetings, so start at six thirty to do a session just with Bob D. And then officially start the meeting at at seven o'clock um. But I really feel strongly that you you all need to. This needs to be clear, um and you need to be comfortable with it, you need to be confident in what you're looking at and how you're assessing it. Um, so anyhow, if uh. If there's any questions, if it's something you think I can answer, I'm happy to, if you really think you're like, hey, let's get Bob D back in here. Um, and this is something that you can talk amongst yourselves, right, you can't talk about it. Specifically as an applicant, like with respect to an application. But if, you know, a couple of years time, like, hey, I looked at it and I'm understanding it this way or I'm understanding it that way. Uh, you you're welcome to do that and then if the the consensus is, yeah, we we want Bob D in, let me know. He's, that's what he is here for, so um if there's any questions now, I'm happy to answer them.
Hey, hey Shannon, can I just make a comment on that?
Of course.
So I think that presentation or that is a really good idea. I think it's a really good idea to do in public session. Cause based on the comments made during public hearing, I'm not sure the public understands that, right, so. When they're giving public comment and we hear about it. Right, there's a difference between public comment for a zone change versus a special permit, et cetera. I think that'd be really great, at least we get it on the record for people to actually understand that.
I'd have to ask Bob on his thoughts on that, uh, cause some of this is. Attorney client information as to how that gets conveyed.
I also think, you know, to your point, Matt. You can have anyone say anything that they're going to and the people who already have their mind made up, it's not gonna change. How they're gonna feel about our vote at the end of the day, we have to keep in mind what our task is. And vote based on rules and regulations, not based on feelings. No, no doubt, Mike, but from my perspective. Shouldn't we be more transparent than not and? Again, I don't know the legal rules and that's why I'm just bringing it up and if it's not possible, fine, but as a commissioner. Do I have an obligation to educate a member of the public when they ask about these things, generally not a specific project? Or is the advice of the attorney, I can't get into that, so that that was. That's sort of the broader questions I have.
Yeah, typically what we do is we direct the public to to contact us, this town staff. And then we do our best to provide that education. Sometimes it's met um at face value and sometimes it is not. Um, and and again, then those individuals can choose to proceed in the direction that they wish. But I'm I'm happy to ask Bob if. He, what his thought would be about doing that during. Do the same thing, do a twenty, you know, uh twenty or thirty minute lead in conversation with the commission. I would not, I would not, it could be open to the public to listen to. But not for this, we're not opening it up for the entire town of Farmington to then ask the town legal counsel. Questions on permitting, that's not what we're, that we're not doing.
No, I I agree with that second part, no doubt.
You know, prior to um running for office, I did our inland and wetland and uh, but you know. To get into or get used to what happens in Farmington, what kind of commissions we have and how things work. You know, we have a document on our um town website. But it's really, I don't wanna call it not user friendly, unless you're in it. It's hard as an ordinary person to figure things out. I don't wanna uh think of this as a dumbing it down, but it would be so great to have like a top sheet. Of course, for each commission, but just like what we do, and I know it's very difficult to put this in one. One page, but uh or maybe do we pull the guidelines, the seven guidelines that, you know, that we evaluate, right, each application? Uh, by, do we, is that the first thing that people see? Cause there are a lot of nuances, there are tons of zoning laws, I mean, as we should, but uh there's so much information online. I'm just, uh, it would be so cool to have just the first document of boom, this is what happens in this form. But I don't know if it's even possible.
So, oh, uh. Where on, so.
There's a commission's booklet right now.
The commission's booklet, but that provides the contact information for all of the commissioners.
Yeah.
And then each. Right, so there's, right, which doesn't really provide any information on the commission there on the commissioner, but there's. On the website, there's a planning and zoning tab, which discusses the planning and zoning commission and has the P O C D and zoning regulations. And then there's a zoning board of appeals, so you're suggesting there on each of those, they. On the planning and zoning commission of what we do and how we do it, and then a zoning board of appeals.
I know, I know, I'm just.
That's actually, that's like a.
Cause right now, we haven't so. Economic development has a. I know, has a white Farmington, like I I often refer my clients to that. Why do you wanna live in Farmington, you know, and it lists key things about Farmington? But it would be nice to have something in layman terms. Um, not getting into all the detail. Between the permits, the zone change, the use change.
So like a one page white paper on what the planning and zoning.
Does, I don't know if I totally undermined where you were going, Matt, but.
No.
That's what my head went.
Right now, we just have like a little paragraph for each commission, okay, that's something to think about. I'm not just, uh, it's something to think about and how to formulate it um.
Anyone else, no, sorry, I jumped in.
I I agree with that a hundred percent, and as, cause I think, I agree with my Matt started with, people don't know. How the town operates. Um, and our website like seems to get into too much detail too quickly. Like, do you wanna see every meeting and every like agenda in minutes, do you wanna see the P O C D and? There's not enough sort of headline type stuff for them to just get big picture feel of what the different pieces of government do.
And uh, Mike, not to make our meeting longer, I know exactly what you meant by uh what you said too. Um, it's so hard, I think, for people from the outside to like, you know, we think about it, but you're talking about someone's property. That they're wa- wishing to, you know, change the use of or develop or whatever. And uh, you know, if we talk to, you know, some of the folks today and we said to them, no, you cannot build this here, you know, they they would be upset. Because it's their property, it's so hard for other people to think that way. But uh people will say what they, go ahead.
Don't keep it on, I need to cut you off.
No, 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 I was just, um, I could, go ahead.
So i- in, look, guys, I I'm not trying to to say I take this lightly and and to be honest, you know. My opinion come a vote would be, but I I don't like the theme of it, but my bigger concern is if it gets voted down without a strict. Here's why it's voted down, it ultimately goes to court and costs the town a ton of money to ultimately lose at the end. So I just am very big into the rules and regulations and will always follow them, but this is not opinion based is is what the concern is, so I share everyone's feeling. But at the end of the day, I do like to just try to understand the rules and regulations and vote based on that.
Yeah, right.
Uh, I agree, I agree with everything Mike said, it'd be nice for an attorney or someone to say. How much of that should I factor in to special permit or zone change is legal consequences or not, right? So again, I I is that connect, is 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 that part of it or not?
Just like even funny revenue generation, like, no, that's not part of what we do.
The the vote is not dependent on whether or not we get appealed, cause either side has the opportunity and the right. To an appeal a decision regardless. The obligation of the commission of any of the land use commissions is to follow the regulation. And to process the applications in accordance with the regulation. And if the applications have been processed in accordance with the regulations, it does not matter. Who chooses to appeal, it then goes to court. And that's how case law is set, you know, if we find out that we did something wrong, so be it, we change it, if there's a. Weak link in the regulation, we change it, okay, fine. But we need to go into it, understanding and and making the decision based on the regulation. Period, it doesn't matter that the appeal needs to not be at the back of anyone's head, other than. Making sure that I'm I'm making a decision and processing the application in accordance with the regulation.
Got it, no, appreciate that clarification, that makes.
If Shannon, if you were to do this one page for zoning, I think we need to say that. It, you you gotta reference the general statute. We, you know, we're just, we're not doing things, just.
Well, and that's, so it's figuring out how to do this, so that it's useful to the layperson.
Yeah. Oh, you can do this.
Right, so let me, yeah, this isn't something that's gonna get done overnight, but I'll tinker with it.
Thank you.
I understand, um, but for now, I'm gonna come back around full circle. Please take a look at my email. Um, and then again, if there are questions or if there is a desire to have Bob D here, then. Or if there's already, if if I've heard, there's saying like a few want him here, a few kinda either way. If you wanna read it and we can reconvene on this at the next meeting. Or if there's a consensus, we wanna try to get Bob D in sooner than later. I mean, I like, I need to know, cause I can't get him like in a one day's notice. I can get him, but.
Christmas Day.
He has other, he does have other clients, so.
Uh, my gosh, all right, so we'll read your email, thank you, and give that to you.
All right.
All right, are we good?
That's I'm I'm finished.
Shannon, and as, can I be very brief, I had my CROG meeting last week, I gave a very brief update.
Oh, sure.
So I I'm, you know, on the CROG, uh, Connecticut re- Region Council of Governments Planning Commission, it's a quarterly meeting. Uh, that we met last Wednesday and the staff walked everyone through the. Uh bipartisan infrastructure bill or the infrastructure investment job acts, so again, it's a new law, right? One point two trillion dollars is being allocated for infrastructure, Connecticut's getting six billion dollars from today through twenty twenty six. So the staff walked us through that, they actually hired a staff member specifically to coordinate and track this bill and funding for Connecticut. Farmington is, they mentioned Farmington being um one of the sort of, there's a called safe streets for all, which maybe. Ties into the sort of complete streets policy, we put in application for five towns applied. For eighteen million dollars to fund seven projects in our region and Farmington was the lead applicant, so that's sort of good to see. And again, it's helped make areas um more safe for cyclists, walkers, wheelchairs, et cetera, so. That was really the big takeaway from the meeting, I'm, I'll be happy to share and email the presentation in the minutes. Uh, with my fellow commissioners and and town staff, just and and Shannon, I'm sure you know, but. They they have a lot of new members and on CROG or a lot of new staff members are really eager to meet all the planning departments in the area and make sure. You know, they're aware of the sort of projects and and everyone's hopper, so uh just, you know, figured I'd share that with you as well.
Sounds great, thank you so much, thank you for attending.
Yep, for sure, thank you, Matt, good info. All right, we're good, all right, the last thing we need to do, please, uh, is to approve minutes from September twelfth, twenty twenty two, we need a motion and a second, please.
Liz Sanford, I moved that we accept the minutes of the September twenty twelfth. Twenty twenty two meeting.
Come on, who wants to go home? All right, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye, opposed, all right, we're good, meeting adjourned, nine forty eight, thank you, everyone.